Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for February 12, 2019. We'll begin with a special order calendar. Decision items. Item number one, 10370BZ, 203 East 74th Street, Manhattan. Anyone here for this?
Good morning, Commissioners, Chair, Vice Chair. My name is Mitch Corby. I'm here on behalf of my colleague Jen Dixon, who couldn't quite make it this morning, and on behalf of the applicant. Thank you.
Okay. I don't think we had any other issues open, so I'd like to make a motion to grant.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
You okay?
Thank you so much. Take care.
Item number two, 40-80BZ, 3541, 3941 West 23rd Street, 20-22 West 24th Street, Manhattan.
Good morning. Your motion, Frank Cave, on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, so this was closed, so we'll talk so that we don't need to reopen. I don't think there -- the only open issue was whether the finding -- whether the conditions had been satisfied, and we received yesterday a letter from the applicant indicating that conditions were satisfied, including access by tenants to the roof. Right? So then, I don't think there were any other issues, right? So then, I'd like to make a motion to grant on condition. The condition is that restoration of the subject building be completed prior to TCO pursuant to the restrictive declaration and maintenance program by the Landmarks Preservation Commission, with the Landmarks Preservation Commission.
Okay. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Thank you.
Continued hearing items. Item number three, 42929 -- thank you. 42929BZ, 4801 Kings Highway, Brooklyn. Sorry, just give me one second. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond on any state of board member questions?
It's an adjournment.
You sign this one swearing.
It doesn't matter. It didn't really need to swear him in because it's an adjournment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I didn't mean that.
I'm sorry about that.
It's okay.
Sorry.
Good morning. Matthew Schomer, David of Hutcher and Citro, yeah.
You wanted to adjourn this, right?
Yeah, we've just -- we've been working on a site plan that kind of satisfies everyone and satisfies the operational requirements. I think a relatively short adjournment would be great for us.
Well, it'll be what our calendar can handle.
Of course.
Also, to alert you, whether or not you heard yesterday's review session, Fire Department issued violations that should be corrected. They should pursue correction, so we hear status of them at the next hearing. And then we also had a letter of support, but a letter of objection citing noise and traffic concerns that would be caused by the convenience store, so you should address that in your submission, okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, so what do we have? Let's see. Wait. Okay. Put it on.
March 26?
That's good.
How long is an adjournment to March 26 with a submission March 6?
That should be good, yeah.
That work? Okay, so next hearing will be March 26, submission date of March 6.
Thank you.
Item number four, 13887BZ, 21836 Hillside Avenue, Queens. Is there an adjournment request on this?
Yes, so we could put it on. It says they're working on site improvement, which is weather dependent, so we should give them some significant amount of time. So they're dealing with concrete and so on. So, yeah, maybe May.
How about, we could do May 21st, the submission date May 1st.
That's good.
So, May 21st, next hearing. Date of May 1st.
Item number -- new cases. Item number five, 11553BZ, 25202 Union Turnpike, Queens. Anybody here? Anyone here for that? Guys, somebody want to -- see if Eric is in the hallway? Release. I don't see him. I don't see him. We'll have the second call.
I usually have so many people.
May have the second call.
That would have to be for the next one, too.
But it's, yeah, he's the next one also.
I'm going to do Fredson. Okay.
No.
Okay.
No issue.
We'll second call that one.
And the next one.
Probably the next one.
Item number six, we will also second call, 2602BZ, 1680 Richmond Avenue, Manhattan. We'll second call that one also.
Okay.
Okay. Item number seven, 18908BZ, 232 Mercer, which is actually now 228 to 230 Mercer Street, Manhattan. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond on any state of board member questions?
Yep.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Frederick Dave Becker. We attended the executive session yesterday. We did submit all new papers, which show the correct address of 228 and 230 Mercer Street. That was the statement of facts. It's a C application affidavit of ownership, certification, inspection and compliance, sign analysis, zoning analysis, and the plans.
Okay, so just a question about that. So, Fire Department, Fire Department's letter, let's see. I'm not sure that they were 100% certain on what the address was, right? And so I'm curious how you came to the conclusion that it's 228, 230 Mercer. I know it says 230 Mercer right on the building.
That's what I was told by your staff.
Oh, so you, as the attorney representing your client, rely on the staff to tell you what the address of your client's property is?
Well, this, we use this. The biz system shows 230. This is what we were directed, so this is how we came up with that address.
But I mean, there is actually an address. Your client knows the address.
The building has several addresses. This is one of them. This is what we've used, 232. So, 230 is what the biz -- the biz system says 230, and we understand that the Fire Department uses 230, so we are happy to work with 230.
Okay, I'm going to have the Fire Department speak, because I don't know if they actually, if they researched the address, but really, that's the job of counsel, by the way. Go ahead.
Well, we have been using 232 because that's what the fire application was granted under. Also, just for what it's worth.
Let's have Chief Daley speak.
I just want to correct.
Because they're the ones who brought the subject up about the address. Let's just do that first, please.
Okay.
Good morning. John Daley, Fire Department. Yet, in reviewing the application, I had entered the address 232 on Mercer Street into DOB biz system. And of course, got this, the CFO, which has described the NYU dormitory building, which does have a house range of 232 to 240. Then I went on to the tax map to see what lot number the PCE was on, which I discovered was Lot 15. From there, entered the block and lot number onto the DOB biz and got the address of 228 and 230 Mercer Street. And also discovered that there's two buildings on one lot. And the suppression system covers both buildings. Excuse me. I also visited the building to get a better idea, and this building has four addresses, Broadway as well. But that's how I was able to discover the error. And Mr. Becker is correct in that the previous resolution had 232. Because at the building right now, PCE does the New York Sports Club, they have 232 on over their door, so everyone thought it was correct. But we will be informing them to change that address to 228. In addition, I also researched the Fire Department records, which we had the correct address, 228 and 230. We are going to be informing the building owners. They have an emergency action plan. They have to correct the addresses as well, so we are taking care of it. And but I think we all settle, agree with the house numbers.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Oh, but just to pick up, but the Fire Department still requested an adjournment, so we're going to continue with this adjournment.
I respectfully request a withdrawal of my --
Oh, so you don't want us to lay this over?
Well, there are -- if you, I do need a little more time. My inspectors are visiting the site today, this week, sorry. So we could have another hearing scheduled in six weeks, and I'll submit my report.
Okay, these two are second.
Can I give me -- I have to write my report and submit copy. Make it four weeks. Is that better? I'll have my report.
Well, it doesn't matter, because it's based on our schedule anyway.
Okay, all right.
The only thing I was trying to say before is a point of reference. Our statement of fact refers to a 12-story building, which is correct. Your caption here refers to a six-story building, so it might want to be amended at some point in the future.
There you are.
On the calendar, it says six stories, so it really should be, our statement says 12-story. It is a 12-story building.
Okay. All right, so then, and then the other question was?
No change to layout, banners or hours.
Okay, so no change, all right.
And you're not proposing to change the hours of operation?
That's what he said. Change the layout.
Banners.
Banners.
No, no change to layout, banners or hours.
Oh, I didn't hear the last part.
Sorry.
Okay, so, but the banners had been already approved by LPC?
We do have signed approvals for them, yes.
So can you submit them?
I'm not even sure if that street, that facade is an LPC facade. The Broadway facade is LPC for sure, but we can submit the signed approvals for those banners.
Okay, well, if it's outside of the district, that's one thing, but if --
I know the Broadway side is a landmark, but Mercer may not be. I will respond back one way or the other.
All right, so if it's under jurisdiction, then provide the certificate of approval.
Of course.
Okay. Of appropriateness. Okay. All right, then, so we need to put this on for another day? Are there any speakers on this one? To give the Fire Department five, six weeks, is that?
Four weeks.
Four weeks? Okay.
I have my report. Yeah, I'm going to.
Four weeks from today is March 12. How about a continued hearing on April 9?
How about, can we do a March hearing at least, please?
There's March 26, but this, I guess we could get from Fire Department.
Whenever Fire Department gives it to us, there's a March 6 submission.
For March 26 hearing. Does that work?
Yeah, okay. And, and, sorry, what?
I was wondering if the board would agree for the Fire Department to file late, if they --
No, no, no. So, Fire Department can obviously give whenever. It has to do with the filing for --
Mr. Becker.
For Mr. Becker, yeah.
Yeah, is March 6 submission date okay?
That's fine, and if there are no issues, potential close and grant that day as well?
Close and vote, yes.
Close and vote, of course, yes. All right.
So next hearing, March 26, submission date, March 6, Fire Department, whenever you're ready.
Thank you very much. You're coming back.
Item number eight, 15014BZ, 30 Broad Street, Manhattan. Okay, raise your right hand. You affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond on any state of board member questions?
Good morning again, Frederick Dave Becker. We went to the executive session. There are only two issues, the Fire Department, and we do not have any signage proposed for exchange or new streets, exchange place or new street.
Okay, no, so there's no signs, but the other question was, is this a legalization of the expansion?
The expansion was, right, well, it was, it came back as a, the expansion came back as a new case, so this is legalization, yes.
It's a legalization of the drawings that, so we have drawings that says existing proposed, right? But the statement of works, I mean, the statement of fact states that the work will be completed, so we have a conflict in the materials.
That's allowed. It's amendment, actually, it's an amendment of a previously granted special permit application.
We know, but the question is, was the work done?
The work has been done.
Okay, so your statement of facts is incorrect because it says that it was completed.
That can be corrected.
And I think, and then Fire Department also requested time to inspect on this one. Okay, this, do you want to add anything, Chief Daley?
John Daley, Fire Department. Amendments to the alteration type one application and the PA application. We'd like to see that done as well.
Okay, amendment to the alt one and the PA application.
Yes.
And, and so that work, that filing should be done prior to our decision. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So that's an instruction to your client?
Got it.
To do that, okay. All right, then, so I'm not really sure if that's the same amount of time, because it takes longer to file and a PA and an alt one. Arguably, you have to do the, I don't know if there's changes to the drawings, I don't know.
If they can, they can file PAA, meaning just the paperwork, so they just have it documented, and my inspectors can refer it, and as well as the Deputy Chiefs of the LPPA unit have documented, and you could also use as an enforcement tool.
Right, but the point is that they need to submit that having been done by March 6, so that's only three weeks. I don't know if that's enough time.
That should be enough time. That's enough time for us.
All right.
So same schedule?
Same schedule.
Next hearing, March 26, or submission date of March 6?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, second call. Item, item number, new cases on the SOC. Item number five, 11553BZ. Raise your right hand, sorry. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond on any state of board member questions?
Mm-hmm. Sorry. Good morning. Thank you very much for having me on again. Elise Foladere from Eric.
Want to pull the mic down a little bit?
Oh, Elise Foladere from Eric Palatnick, PC. On behalf of the applicant, today I have with me the survey you requested to show the zoning lot.
Great.
It is, um.
Does it tell us the lot area?
I'm going to have to do a second submission anyway, so I will make sure to clarify that before the next hearing.
Okay.
Because we have to plant trees.
Mm-hmm. Sometimes the surveyor doesn't show the lot area, in which case you need to contact, oh, it does, 10,793.3 square feet.
Oh, 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 sorry. I smacked him in the face. So sorry.
So size of zoning lot. Sorry. 10,793.3 square feet. Okay, great.
And then we'll plant trees, that's not a problem, in the same area that was shown on a previously approved plan.
Mm-hmm.
I did confirm, yeah, they did install a fence. I'm not sure the reason for it. And in terms of signage, they got permits for the signage they have using all the frontages. So some frontages have like 10 illuminated, that's like 10 over, but they have permits for all those signs. So the question is, do they have to go back and redo their signage and get new permits?
No, but I, so, sorry, so you mean they calculated based on some other method?
So they used all the frontages combined and then got permits for it. And they have well below the amount of signage of all the combined, because it's surrounded by streets on every side.
Right, right.
Right, whereas like one frontage may be slightly above the others, compensate by being well below.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, okay. Maybe just provide us the permits, so that we see that it was permitted, yeah.
Okay, not a problem. And then, I guess we need time for planting, so that is.
Right, okay.
That's fine.
And then you need, it's not clear whether, it seems like the site was cleaned up, so.
It was, because during the notice of comments, we put in a trash enclosure, and, which you probably saw, so during that period, it was cleaned up.
Mm-hmm.
But planting was not installed.
So the trees, there's no planting beds or anything?
No.
So just to be clear, the trees need to be planted in a four-foot-deep planting bed with curbs, okay?
Okay.
So not just tree, because we've even seen ones where sort of the dirt just falls over the edge, right? So it needs to be a real planting bed.
Okay, not a problem.
Okay, so, and I, four foot front to back.
Mm-hmm.
What I mean, okay. And then you'll amend the drawings to reflect that?
Yeah.
Are there any speakers on this? All right, so since you're going to plant, we need to give you April for planting, so a May submission?
Yeah, we've been doing a lot of first, if you still have it left. Do you want to do May 1st, May 21st, May 1st submission? We could do that, yes. Okay. Next hearing, submission date of May 1st.
Okay, so when you submit the drawings, make sure that it includes detail of the planting bed with curbs and that it's four-foot.
Unfortunately, this is the same architect we use on a lot of cases, so I think they're very aware.
Okay, good, all right, all right. Good, so we have the dates, right?
Yeah. Okay.
Second call. Item, item number six, 2602BZ, 1680 Richmond Avenue, Staten Island. You have to raise your right hand. End it out and then you, all right. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond on any state of board member questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you. I handed out the DEC letter, which closes the spill, but it does not meet standards because it was, that doesn't mean that it wasn't closed, but it was bulk, the bulk of the remediation, I don't know what's the word for it, the bulk of the contaminants were taken out, and then they closed the spill based on that. That's what I was told.
So this.
That this is a spill closure letter, and it was sufficient, it meant the sufficient amount of bulk contaminants taken out to meet the threshold to close the spill. It's not worded great, that's why.
Okay, so they were removed, but remediation, I thought those are remediation wells that are, you know, they're vaporizing the contaminants. Are they now able to take those out?
So they, I was told that the little, the tent was going to be taken out, and it hasn't yet been taken out. And this letter is the closure of the spill.
It does leave a few questions, because right after it states the spill is closed, there's in parentheses, does not meet standards.
Yeah, that's why I asked them, and they said that this, it was worded poorly, but this is the spill closure letter.
And when they say does not meet standards, does not meet standards for continued evaluation, or does not meet standards as in, that's really what my question is, it is obscure.
I asked about, yeah, it is obscure, I understand.
It isn't, if you keep reading, it's clear that they didn't meet the standards.
Okay.
Right. So can we get the DEC spill report? New York State DEC spill report?
Well, this is a, right, no, so this is a spill closure letter, sort of, but, but it does not, and it says all monitoring wells and/or system wells, which is what we're seeing in that area, right?
It says must be properly abandoned.
Yeah, so.
Thank you so much. And then it says notwithstanding this approval.
Right, I, I.
Right, but it goes on to say you had contaminants that migrated off-site that you didn't address, that there were environmental conditions that the department was not aware about of, and that.
I can ask.
They're not sure that you've done enough sufficient cleanup to protect human health in the future, and you had fraud allegations in obtaining the approval for the inactivation. So that's like, kind of like, you failed.
Yeah, I mean, I'll ask them again, they told me that this was the closure.
Commissioner, is it possible that, that they are leaving themselves open under those circumstances?
Yeah, it could be.
As opposed to, that's, that's, I'm reading it that way, and I completely agree that that could be a way of reading this, which makes it obscure to me, but is it possible that what they're saying is, this is closed, but we're reserving our right to, in the future, come back if there is fraud?
Yeah.
If this spill has migrated? That's.
That's the way I read it.
They told me that language was standard in all of their language.
And it could very well maybe, but if they can find the definition of does not meet standards, which could mean does not meet standards for us to continue investigating, or a plethora of things, but to me right now, could mean that.
You're describing it as how they described it to me, but.
And I, I'm not, I'm not questioning that, I'm just.
So, you were asked.
We had spoken to, we discussed this with our environmental project manager, Tracy, and she said that the applicant should put in a FOIL request with DEC for a New York State DEC spill report for the spill in question, and then provide that record for the next submission, so we'll give report and any other documentation.
I think that would clear it all up for us. If the spill report would tell us whether and what the circumstances are as far as DEP knows it, and I think that's the easiest way to go about it.
Okay, not a problem. So, and then, once this is cleared up, they intend to restripe and put in the parking, but that hasn't been done yet because they're still, the remediation area is still intact.
Okay, so I think that's part of the question, is what is, because we were asking for a timeline for completion of the work?
Yeah.
So there must be a timeline related to this letter and what the DEC is allowing them to do to remove the monitoring wells, so the tent is one thing, but there's monitoring wells because they want to change that to parking spaces.
Yeah, everything else, though, has been completed.
Everything else what?
All the other work on the site has been completed. It's just those parking spaces.
Okay, so, so, all right, so we needed to see photos. We don't know anything about this.
Well, they, you guys discussed the photos yesterday and said it looked like the work was completed, but you weren't sure from the statement that it appeared, so I'm just confirming that all the other work has been completed. I can do more photos.
Yeah, no, so, so I think what's confusing is, yeah, so what's confusing is this request for additional, it's just an extension of time to obtain a CFO, right?
Yeah.
So the question is, what is still open that prevents you from obtaining a CFO?
Yeah.
And that's what, I don't know. Maybe the other commissioners understand what's still open, but I don't.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's, that's the thing, because, you know, this was, when was this grant? This was granted a long time ago, right?
Yeah.
So the question is, and, and so the question is, why isn't there a CFO after almost 17 years?
Because, as explained in the letter, changed hands, and then. Okay. They needed to finish construction, and now they've told me that besides the remediation, which has been an ongoing.
Right.
Thing, all the other work, and I can provide more photographs and confirm that.
No, but so this, so this is something where, in order to get a CFO, you have an architect or an engineer who has drawings where everything is now ready to, has been filed.
Yeah.
The drawings have been approved, the permit has been issued, the work has been done.
Okay.
And then there's a list of items for sign-off, right?
Yes.
For final sign-off. What's left?
Okay.
Right?
I believe the remediation is still ongoing, because one of the conditions that the BSA put on the previous grant was to take the remediation equipment out. If they are done with the remediation, I believe, and this letter is dated October 2018, if they were done at that time, based on this letter, if this is the case, they could have taken this remediation equipment out, but it's still showing on the draw.
And it still exists. So the question is, what is still open that prevents you from obtaining a C of O?
Yeah.
And that's what, I, I don't know. Maybe the other commissioners understand what's still open, but I don't.
Okay.
So, I mean, that was, that's the thing, because, um, you know, this was, uh, when was this grant? This was granted a long time ago, right? So the question is, and, um, and so the question is, why isn't there a C of O after almost seventeen years?
It, because as explained in the letter, it changed hands, and then...
Okay.
They needed to finish construction, and now they've told me that besides the remediation, which has been an ongoing...
Right.
Thing, all the other work, and I can provide more photographs and confirm that.
No, but so this, so this is something where, in order to get a C of O, you have an architect or an engineer who has drawings where everything is now ready to, has been filed.
Yeah.
The drawings have been approved, the permit has been issued, the work has been done.
Okay.
And then there's a list of items for sign-off, right? For final sign-off. What's left?
Okay.
Right?
I, I believe that remediation is still ongoing, because one of the conditions that the VSA put from the previous grant was to take the remediation equipment out. If they are done with the remediation, I believe, and, and this letter is dated October 2018, if they were done at that time, based on this letter, if this is the case, they could have taken this remediation equipment out, but it's still shown on the draw.
And it still exists. I confirm that the remediation equipment is still there.
It's still there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They are ongoing tests.
They said that it's over, but they had, still haven't removed all the remediation.
If the remediation...
We need the court report.
Does it seem like they're going to?
They said that they're going to, when I spoke to the lawyer for the site.
If, if the remediation is done, and you, you're submitting draws to the VSA today, showing this remediation equipment in, so you're in violation with the previous grant, because the previous grant clearly says, "Take this out as soon as you're done with the remediation."
Yeah, but, I mean, it's all cleaning, it's only October, they, and it's a process to take it out. They're not just, like, leaving it as...
So when do you think they're going to take it out?
They're intending on doing it as soon as, they're working on that now.
So is there a timeline? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I can get a timeline for the next submission.
Can you get us a clarification from the environmental engineer?
Yeah, definitely.
Why this, if...
Yeah, it was just hard to do in a single day.
Is the remediation done?
Yeah.
Make this very clear.
Yeah.
The second point, if the remediation is done...
Yeah.
Why this remediation equipment is still in place, when it's going to be taken out? If the remediation is not done yet...
Yeah.
What is left, and what is the timeframe for completion?
Okay.
Right. And, and also for any other work that may be on the site, because I'm not even sure that the remediation has any impact on the CO, so I don't know why it would.
Means, yeah. You need to see the parking, and that's the...
Yeah, I think...
Right, so, so the issue is, what other construction work remains on the site that's holding up the COO? Because remediation, monitoring wells sometimes are installed for years and years and years, right? In this case, they were. It was something like seventeen years. But, um, but that, so that's the question, okay? And I know you can't answer this on the fly, but that's what we, we need to have those answers.
Okay, I'll provide permits showing what...
And that'll help us understand what kind of extension is reasonable, right? Okay. Okay. Um, are there any speakers on this? Yeah.
So those, that's the remediation.
Right.
Because they're up to...
Yeah, okay, so she said, okay. Okay. So, um, our compliance officer informs, he has pictures of the remediation wells that, I mean, from the surface area that are obviously still there, and advises us that they're available on our database. Okay, thank you. Um, okay. So, let's set a time for submitting the timeline, really, that's what we're looking at, right?
And I don't, I don't think this information will take that long. I just think I needed more than a day to get more environmental.
Okay, well, you do need a letter from your environmental engineer, so that might take a little more than a day, but, yeah.
Yeah, it'll take more than a day, but I'm saying I don't need two months.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
You don't need two months.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Might have to get.
What about the March 26th?
Uh, they're currently nineteen.
That's okay, it's a little one.
Okay, so, uh, March 26th for March 6th submission.
Okay.
Thank you. Not that long.
All right. Oh.
Good point.
Good point.
Is that time for foiling DEC?
To obtain the closed spill, your spill report.
Takes a little... The last time we did it was...
It took us till there, can you come back?
It took about a month, right? The last time we did one, I think it took about a month.
Because one of the suggestions was that your client or you reach out to DEC to obtain the spill report via foil, um, and we were questioning whether a March 6th submission is soon enough or enough time to...
I mean, I don't know what information to the environmental engineer already have, so can I try to do the date?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, totally.
Okay.
But I just wanted to flag that for you.
Right.
Okay, so we'll keep it at March 26th for March 6th. Great. Thank you.
Appeals calendar, continued hearing items, item number nine, 2017-5A through 2017-7A, Sharretts, Rhode, Staten Island.
They wanted to adjourn this, right?
Was there a date you had in mind?
I was told that they just got the information they needed to refile it, um, DEP, so can it be a June hearing?
June hearing? Oh, so willingly.
Just a June hearing and a June submission?
Um, they think they can get it by the end of May, so...
Like, so, but the end of May means...
A June.
Is June, right?
Yeah, so, uh, could the submission date be May 22nd?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that would be a June 11th hearing.
Okay.
Great.
Item number 10, 2017-59A, 3857, Oceanview Avenue, Brooklyn.
And, um, they intend to put sprinklers. I can ask them to put a note on the first page. Oh, Elise Fullader from Eric Atlantic, you see. Um, I can ask them to put a note on the first page that is, can say, "We'll have sprink, or will be sprinklers," or something to that effect.
So, I don't know if fire department had a chance to look at the drawings?
Yeah.
Yeah, we got a letter.
Wait, just a ques, sorry, procedure question. Are we having a hearing? Are we adjourning? You haven't been sworn in.
I thought it was an A case.
It's an A case.
Oh, sorry, it's an A case, sorry.
It's okay.
Retract all of that, sorry.
And it's not, it's not adjourning, yeah. But it's not an adjournment, yeah.
Great, thank you. Sorry, that's not my clarity.
So the fire department submitted a letter yesterday. So I guess you can speak about it.
Go ahead.
John Daly of Fire Department. I attended yesterday's executive session. I heard your comments. I did have a chance to review it, and as per Chapter 5 of the New York City Fire Code, they are required sprinkler. In addition, I reviewed the DOB, this application for this project, and they are proposing to add sprinklers throughout the entire building.
Okay.
We're good.
Great, thank you.
Like I said, if you'd like a note on the first page, I can ask them.
Uh, yeah, let's see.
Clarification.
Yes, um... I don't know if there was anything, there's still open DEP issues, yeah.
So you want a clarification of the use?
Yeah, so...
And the uses.
And the uses is, um...
Yeah.
Like we explained a few hearings ago, they still want to maintain that community facility for community members to meet downstairs.
No, but so that, the, the original...
Yeah.
The last we heard, it was some kind of a Russian, something or other. Is it still that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That's still the intention. They don't want to do a dig.
Okay. Okay. All right, so in terms of the DEP open issues...
You have to submit to DEP, do the site certification, yeah.
And then they have to give it to me, and then I...
Okay.
Should we do the same as the Sharretts?
Sure.
Is that fine?
Uh, May 22nd?
May 22nd submission, June 11th hearing.
Speakers?
Oh, yeah, are there any speakers on this?
Thank you.
There's everyone's watching.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, item number, zoning calendar, continued hearing items, item number 11, 2016, 1208 BZ, 300 East 64th Street, Manhattan. Raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the board and to respond on a city board member question?
Frank Sejoc, Ackerman LLP for the applicant. Good morning, Madam Chair Commissioners. We attended yesterday's executive review session, and Matthew Schwartz, Berry's New York City Director of Operations, is, is here with me to answer any questions. Per the letter we submitted in advance of the hearing, we're expecting the Plytech tiles to arrive at the studio this week, and they'll be installed this weekend. And after that time, we're actually starting to make the arrangements for the follow-up testing that will need to be coordinated between the building management, the commercial landlord, the condo board and tenants, and Berry's, but we'll do so with everyone's agreement on, on the testing protocol. In yesterday's review session, there was just some comment with respect to acoustical limiting. I just want Matthew to just speak to how the system works, who has access to it, and, and what they had done since the last hearing, so you have that information.
Let's see, they're done.
Good morning. So immediately, Matthew Schwartz, Director of Operations for Berry's Bootcamp. So immediately after the last hearing in December, we did turn down our entire system at the E64 Street location. We then had a sound technician come balance the system, and the sound technician has remote access. No one in the studio has access to change any sound in the studio itself. So it all has to go through an outside company to come in and actually do it with their engineers.
So, they manage it from outside, some sort of computer?
Correct.
Okay, so, so there's automatically limiters on it that the staff can't modify?
Correct, and there is a limiter for the 5:00 AM to 7:30 AM hour even lower, and then it does go up to the levels that they had initially set for the 8:00 AM and after.
And when was this, when was this installed?
So the sound net system was installed when the studio was first opened, which was in 2016.
And when was it monitored recently?
So the monitoring happened in December. The last hearing was December 11th, I believe.
11th, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, the sound was turned down December 11th, and the engineer came on December 13th.
And have you received noise complaints since December 13th?
Uh, I had received, so I was in direct contact with the tenant. I gave her my phone number, my email. She let me know that she heard something in the week of the holiday time, when they were home and the sound was a little quieter within the city. With that in mind, we actually canceled our morning classes, and we made sure to instruct the instructors to change their programming, not using weights, making sure that their music was turned down even lower immediately following that, and that was the last I had heard from the tenant.
Is each of the classes, is the morning class and the afternoon class, do they generally both have weights?
Yes.
And the only difference is the size of the class? The morning class would be larger?
Depending on the time of year, that can change. In the holiday weeks, oftentimes those early morning classes end up being a little lower in volume than...
As a norm, though.
As a norm, the morning classes are busier, usually around the 7:00 AM hour and the 6:00 PM hour are busiest two times.
So are you suggesting that moving forward, there won't be weights in the morning classes, or only per holiday time?
Uh, so we did that as a, like a sign of good faith and a good neighbor, to make sure that they weren't hearing anything extra. We haven't heard since then. We, the tenant and I had text back and forth that day, and then I, we followed up on the holiday week to check in with her. She had claimed she had not heard anything more at that point.
So after the, so after the holiday week, that, that, you haven't heard any further complaint?
I have heard nothing from the tenant.
And, and you're going to assure that the next testing that happens after the tiles are down is going to be in the morning when it's most sensitive?
Right, we will, as Frank mentioned, we will make sure that everyone is on board with whenever we do the testing. We are happy to do it whenever, based on the time.
I, I prefer it to be during that, that 5:30, 7:30, only because that's the time that the letters had complained about it.
Right.
Uh, and also, one of the letters stated that they didn't hear anything during the 12:45 to 1 o'clock when she first visited the location, so just for, just to be secure that everything, that there won't be issues in the future.
Correct.
I would, I would prefer that if we have a, we pick a day that there's a large glass, and we use weights, and we see if we remediate the issue.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I just want to be clear, um, so right now, there aren't any morning classes with weights?
There are.
So we canceled for the holiday week only.
Only holiday.
Based on the request from the tenant, just stating that many people in the condominium were home for the holiday weeks in the mornings.
Okay, so, okay, so the, the concern about the sound, though... It, this was when you already had these limiters in place, that she was able to, the tenant was able to hear the music or whatever, the instructors, over the speaker system. So what's the permanent solution for, in terms of that? Because that's not related, I don't believe, to the Plytech, right? So what's the permanent solution so that she doesn't hear at 5:30 in the morning or 6:00 in the morning instructors or music?
So I think, um, in our next testing, there's going to have to be testing, again, of the sound system and the, the noise and vibration that, that would come from, from weights, so it's a...
No, I'm not talking about the weight.
I understand, yeah.
I'm just talking about the sound system.
And so my point is that there'll, there'll be testing of the sound system in addition to the weights. So it'll be sort of comprehensive testing to make sure that nothing, neither noise nor vibration are encroaching into, to her residence.
Okay, because...
And, and sorry, just to, to finish, the, the previous report that was submitted, that, um, I believe the testing was done late November, early December, that testing indicated that, that the, the sound system was not audible, so we'll have to work with the tenant to make sure we're, we're narrowing down on, on what it is she's hearing. And that's going to require the coordination and cooperation of, of all parties involved.
But, but that test was done at 1 o'clock in the afternoon, as opposed to when the ambient noise levels are much higher?
That's correct.
Right, so, and you're more likely to hear it in the morning when everything is very, very silent, you know, to the extent New York...
That's my understanding. So again, the, the testing will occur at a time when that, that ambient noise is, is lower so that we can sort of more accurately understand what, what it is that's, that's encroaching.
Okay, and then, I know you're not the testing engineers, but a lot of the questions yesterday had to do with the idea of using drops at six inches above the ground, where I know a lot of people who work out who can't possibly put a weight only six inches above the ground.
Right, so...
Right, they have to drop from 12 inches or 18 inches because they can't touch their toes with the weight or they can't bend their knees adequately, that kind of thing, so...
So I'd like to do two things. I'd like to have Matthew just speak to the operations and how the weights are used in, in the gym, and then also just note that the testing protocol, again, will, will be developed and discussed with the sound consultant and the, the tenants to ensure that what they're testing is capturing the actual operations and is consistent with, you know, with, with what's going on in the gym. And, and I believe that we'll, we'll most likely have to have that sound consultant here at the next hearing to explain their findings to the board, but I'll, I'll have Matthew just speak to what's actually happening in the studio.
With respect to...
Uh, so with respect to the weight usage in our studios, the way that Berry's workout is, is lower weights with higher reps. It's not like the extreme, like Olympic lifting of the higher weight sets. And it's all done on a bench or on the floor. Uh, the bench is a step aerobics bench, not a proper, like, chest bench that you would see in a normal gym. Uh, so it's low to the ground, and the weights are done in ways that are not lifted above the head and dropped, or lifted to a deadlift level, to hip level and drop. They're all done in movements that are lower to the ground, so...
Yeah, I, I understand that, but I'm also thinking about classes I've seen where a lot of people drop the weights from a lot higher than six inches, you know, from 12 or 18 inches. I, I know that it's not the same thing that we talk about in other gyms, where you're throwing it from over your head, but the, but the issue is, the sound drop is really based on a, a sort of soft thump, as opposed to a more extreme, let's say someone's holding a, I don't know, two 20-pound weights, and that's a little much for them, right? Or they're just not that agile in the breathing part, so they're dropping it from higher than six inches. And I'm concerned that using six inches is a very low bar, you know? So to speak.
As Frank said, I think that we can, of, of course, test that from multiple heights. I think the height testing was done based on the bench level, as most of the exercises are done laying or, or kneeling on the benches themselves.
Okay, all right, so I think it'd be clearer if, if the testing included 12- and 18-inch drops, unless 18 is really never happens, but 12 likely happens.
I think what the report will also do is, is really flesh out and explain the methodology and, and the choice of, of the different drop levels, and, and we can, you know, review Berry's operations and with, with the, the sound consultant, determine whether it needs to be 6, 12, and 18, or just 6 and 12. And please include the weight of, like, you generally, what, what weights, what, what's the highest dumbbell that you guys have in a class?
Uh, the highest dumbbell typically used is around 35 to 40 pounds.
And there's no barbells, are there?
No, no, it's all free-weighted dumbbells.
And those would be done on a bench or also while moving?
Done on a bench, so every, uh, the way that the layout of the class works, everyone has a specific spot that they are staying in, so that we can have a fixed workout space, so the instructor has space to demo moves, and also so that there isn't overthrow of people, just to keep the class limited in size.
So it'd be helpful if you, like, like your counsel said, going through the program with the sound attenuator so that they have an understanding of the level of weight that should be tested, and, and I concur with the chair that other heights need to be considered, because frankly, the, the, the bench is higher than six inches, and the extension is higher than six inches.
Correct.
All right, are there any other questions from the commissioners? Are there any speakers on this? This is Berry's Bootcamp.
I realized in her email that she said she was coming in the afternoon. I tried to read her on the cell phone, sorry, it's...
Okay, we'll, we'll let her...
Yeah, I'll take responsibility. Okay, sorry.
Okay, um, all right, thank you, so...
So are we gonna, we're gonna keep the record open for her to speak?
Yeah, more than keep the record open, we're, you mean let her speak later today? Yes, if she comes this afternoon, yes, because we didn't arrange the hearing to meet her schedule, we don't normally. So, but in addition to which, there needs to be additional testing after the Playtech is installed and so on. So that's expected to be installed this month, right?
Correct, this weekend. And then we're hoping to do the testing as soon as possible afterwards, once the tiles are in place.
Okay, so we could put this on for, do we have room at the end of March?
You have 20.
Okay, that'll work.
So next year will be March 26th, submission date March 6th.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 12, 2016, 4240 BZ, 123130 Avenue, Manhattan. Rachel, hand, you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioner Frederick A. Becker. We've had an executive session with regard to the hearing. The hearing notice, the notice, I should say, the hearing notice just talks about a public hearing. It doesn't talk about a German or new hearing or anything of that notice, that nature. We tried to post it ourselves. We were told by the managing agent they would post it and we had no access to the building and they posted us and sent us the photograph that it was posted with an email. That is what you received.
So, so that's the gym that posted it?
No. The building, the managing agent.
Building management.
Plaza Management post. I am Cohen of Plaza Management posted the, posted the notice and sent me a confirmation as well as the photograph, which I sent to you together with a copy of that notice. And that is how it was done. We offered to do it, they said, we want to do it, we will do it. And they're the managing agent, I can't tell them what they should, how to manage their building.
Have you also submitted a copy of this email that you got from the management?
I sent, so noted, but said it on a letter that I, this was sent to us by them. I can do that, but I said a letter, this was sent, posted by them. I put it on my letter saying I did. They did it, so. Together with a copy of the notice. I mean, it's a, that's all.
Okay, so going forward on these cases, please don't use the posting for posting the notice to neighbors that goes in the mail. Create your own posting that indicates clearly that there's a hearing on a certain date and that comments can be submitted to submit in writing, okay? Because the thing that's posted there implies that there's a form you have to fill out and then, and the form's not there.
Okay, I can also, I'll take that language out, but it does talk about when the hearing is and to submit and all that. I'll take it, the language about the notice objection, no problem. Okay. There was an issue in opening, my apologies on the, we'll take it as January, you know, some of the papers just, it's been going on for so long and somebody noticed the comments, so we apologize for the mistake.
So it is January?
We'll take January, it's January versus February, we'll take the January. In terms of the noise issues, we did in our initial submission show what we had done in terms of insulation, acoustical installation measures. Those plans were originally filed with the original application. I just resubmitted and wanted to give, since it was a concern of the board, I just wanted to expound upon further what had been done, what issues had been done, when it had been done, et cetera, so that the board would have a fuller understanding and a better record of what had been done there. But the, we did show the acoustical items, the, in our first submission, in our, the original application submission.
Right, but it says that there have been, so in your recent submission, you, there are obviously ongoing noise issues.
There were at one point.
So is there someone from the gym here?
No, I'm here from the gym.
So, so that's, so I'm confused. So your recent submission states that there are, there have been noise issues and then not explaining, so what's the status now?
The status is that we haven't had any issues in the past several months. We spoke to the managing agent, they haven't heard anything. I was in touch with the managing agent just, you know, recently and they haven't heard anything further from their tenants and we, this is, so we have no issues. And we did the posting, so if there had been issues, it's a small building, people would have seen it. So the answer is everything is fine as of this moment and has been for quite a period of time.
Are there any speakers for 12313rd Avenue, which is New York Sports Club? No? Okay.
In your last submission, you had also stated that the boxing classes were stopped and the programs were changed and the windows were closed, and that is the current condition?
That is the current condition and it's staying that way, yes.
So I guess that's.
The window being open was a one-shot deal that happened during a summer month and it was, as soon as it was, you know, found out, it was effectively closed.
So what I'm trying to understand, it would have been helpful if you brought your, the operator of the gym.
Well, I've been in touch with the managing agent on.
No, no, it's unrelated, so in terms.
I mean, I'm sorry, I've been in touch with Heather Allen, who is the general manager.
Of the gym, right, but we like to speak to the, because they know their gym, right?
Well, we, this has been, it's been a ma, this was a major issue of concern. After the last hearing, I reached out to her because I wasn't aware of anything. I reached out to the managing agent. We had many emails and correspondence back and forth and I'm speaking fully for them so that I don't believe, I think she can tell you.
You're a fact witness, right? But you don't have the facts about the gym because you don't run the gym. So when you come to these hearings without the operator of the gym, it's difficult for us to get the answers, right? So what I wanted to know, please don't interrupt. What I wanted to know was, the letter that you submitted seems to indicate that they had to, as Commissioner Shonda mentioned yesterday, scale down the operations in order to address the noise issues.
Right.
So, and if scaling down is how they're addressing the noise, that's not a permanent solution because what happens when they scale back up the operations to be more what people want in the gym, you know? Clientele come in and they say, we want.
This is, I can speak to that because we've discussed that, I've discussed that with her. The answer is, as far as they are concerned, this is a permanent solution. We do not want to go back to the status quo ante. We do not want to have further issues. We stopped them, they've been stopped for months and months and months and months, and they have no intention, whether requested or otherwise, this not happening again.
So they wouldn't object to us having a condition of approval that certain kinds of activities wouldn't occur in the gym?
Yes, at this, on this level, there's a sub-level. They're happy to, if you want no boxing, I've had this in previous application with, under, in previous boards where we've had not, we've had limitations on activities in certain locations within the gym. If you want to say no boxing on the ground floor, fine. We've done it on 23rd Street, I've done it in other places, yes, happy to accommodate.
So the source of the noise complaints was the boxing?
Yeah. How did you identify that?
Well, there were also heavy bags.
Because it's, some of the box, sometimes the bag is hung from a beam. And when it's hung from a beam, we know from experience that there are vibrations.
So this is heavy bags, it's not?
It's not like little guy, it's a.
It's a heavy bag.
So have the heavy bags been relocated?
They've stopped using them.
So they're still hanging there?
No, they're not there, they've removed, the heavy bags are long gone. Boxing is not offered.
And so they didn't do an independent identification of the noise complaint being related to the heavy bags, we're just going from past experience that?
No, no, this, there were noise complaints and that was, it was determined that the boxing was problematic and they were, that's when the boxing was stopped.
And when was that stopped?
Several months ago.
And there has been no complaints in the last several months?
That's not, we're aware of.
So when you say boxing, what you're talking about is hitting these heavy bags?
Heavy, heavy bags, not.
Because I want to be clear because boxing is a thing that's.
No, no, we're not, no, we're not, they don't have a ring, this is not a business gym. No, this is boxing, if you want to prohibit the placement of heavy bags on the ground floor, we are comfortable with that condition.
Well, why the ground floor? How do we know that?
Well, if it's in the cellar, it's not, it's below our space, it's not, it's not going to travel up through another floor.
But you're proposing not to provide that program at all, right? You've eliminated it.
We've eliminated it as of now.
So then.
So you want to eliminate it, eliminate it, fine.
Without discussing with your client, you're okay with that?
Yes.
Also in your statement, you had stated the heavy weights are not being used in classes during early morning or early evening classes. So, and that's also a permanent solution?
Yes.
And UGI balls, I don't know what they are.
An Oogie ball, I had to look it up myself. The Oogie balls are the large rubber balls, you know, they're the ones that are around this big, you sit on, bounce on, bend over, whatever you do with them.
They make noise?
What? Oogie, I mean, whatever they pronounce, but that's what it is, I Googled it myself.
But yeah, why do they make noise?
Yeah.
Maybe they're heavy, really heavy.
But those aren't medicine balls.
Medicine balls are heavy, Oogie balls are those little cushiony things.
Yeah, the therapists use it for a lot of.
Whatever it is, they, whatever activities they were doing with them, that also created some form of noise, so they stopped using them on the first floor level.
Okay, so heavy bags, Oogie balls, and weights, these are only three things that created noise?
Yes.
And your client's comfortable with not continuing any use of those three things?
On the ground floor.
On the ground. Has there been use of it in the cellar in the last few months?
There's been no boxing, they have used the Oogie balls and there are some light weights. It's not a muscle gym, it's a small gym, so there have been hand weights for the muscle.
And that's only been on the cellar? And since this, for the last few months, this has been used on the cellar and there haven't been any complaints?
Okay, we really are talking about no Oogie balls?
I've always had a thing against Oogie balls.
I hate to go with something just based on experience. There is no testing, there is no expert witness, there is no even a letter from an expert saying that the source of the noise was identified as this.
Right.
And now it's gone, so let's do it. At least we need to get something in writing like that, even from the operator.
Yeah, we don't even have anything from the operator. We, yeah, I agree that I feel really uncomfortable about this because we can't speak to the operator of the gym even about their experiences.
Nor can we find any conclusion as to, any way to see that this, the complaints, conclude that the complaints were related to these things besides a statement that they were?
Well, we, if I may, we know that these activities, we, we did some noise testing upstairs, we've mentioned that, Longman Lindsay mentioned that. We know that since we have stopped these activities, there have been no complaints, so there is a pause and there's an effect.
Did you submit the testing material?
I don't know if we had submitted the testing.
I don't think so. I don't think so, yeah.
And even, even if it was submitted, if you've done testing before, you have to do testing after. It's not just we did testing, we have some issues. And you know what? We did X, Y, and Z, sounds like no complaint. We're going to bring the testing guy back, have him retest and give you a piece of paper saying that based on the retesting, the previously monitored issues are not present.
Well, and the other part of it is, the testing reports always have a recommendation. So we don't know whether they complied with the recommendation from the testing engineer, right? They always say something, install padding.
Well, they, what they did was they, this, I can, I will submit the report, it was dated March 7, 2017, from Longman Lindsay. Thereafter, gym was closed and thereafter, we did column enclosures, we did sound separation, all of which was shown on plans. So we did, we responded to what they suggested.
So the testing identified the issues and then recommended an installation of sound attenuation measures, which was done.
Which was done and which was.
Were on the plans and the plans were submitted.
Correct.
So if we get the testing results, the report, and we look at it and we see that, I believe that makes us like feel better. But so far, we don't have the testing.
We don't have the reports, we don't know that what was done is an implementation of the reports, we're just going on your say-so as opposed to your submission. And we don't have, we don't have the gym management here to tell us about their activities.
How many set of plans were submitted to us? Like, did you submit the plans before and the plans after?
No.
No, we.
No, they're the as.
There's that as-built plan.
Okay.
Okay.
Which showed acoustical materials and dimensions and specifications.
So we got the plans after the.
If you look at the sixth page, yes. Page 66.
Okay, all right, so I asked if there were speakers. Okay, so we need the testing reports, what work was done in response to the testing reports in, you know, to explain to us what work was done in response to the testing reports. And so it accompanies maybe the drawings that you've already submitted. If the drawings have already been submitted, then you say the drawings dated such and such, which were submitted on such a date, so we can find them, right? And then, and then we need something from the testing engineer.
You know what, regarding this, I don't want to be like very tough on this. If you've done testing before and you have somebody who prepared the plans for you and this somebody is a licensed person and can give you a letter saying that he looked at the testing results, he addressed the recommendations and in his opinion, the plans addressed the issue and it's good to go?
Well, that would come actually from the testing engineer. Testing engineer would say, based on my recommendations and reviewing the plans, this is following my recommendations.
Yeah, but what I'm saying, they don't, I don't want to like force them to redo the testing. If the engineer believes that he addressed the recommendations of the testing company and these plans will work well, that's fine for me.
So when you say engineer, you mean the one who did the drawings?
The one who did the drawing and the one who did the testing.
We can get a letter from Longman Lindsay that would, I think, would address, Commissioner said, which said, we recommended on pursuant to our letter, we reviewed the plans prepared by the architect, blah, 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 and they addressed our issues. Is that my correct, Commissioner? Thank you, right.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
All right, okay, so, let's put this again, and what do we have?
My date seems to be the 26th.
Well, that's only if we have rooms till the 26th. Okay, that's all right.
So March 26th, submission date of March 6th.
And I will bring the manager next time as well, the chair.
Are the tenants going to be notified again or?
So the tenants apparently were notified, so there is that strange photo that shows that there was a posting in the lobby and nobody came and we didn't see any submissions. But I do have to say, submissions weren't really encouraged on that prose thing.
So are we suggesting that they be re-noticed?
I'm, I'm always for encouraging outreach, I don't know.
I would ask that, I'd ask that they be re-notified.
Re-notify, all right.
With a more proper notification.
Yeah, so to be clear about the notification, you know what we're looking for, right? Is to be clear that if you have a comment, you submit a comment to submit, not that you have to show up here or fill out a form and notarize it.
It said, it said you can submit, and it said you can show up.
No, 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 showing up, people, you know, people are taking a day off of work to come here.
I'll take out, I'll take out the objection consent language.
Okay, make sure it's clear, try to, try to work with us on this.
Don't we have a sample we can give them?
We have a sample.
I've asked for that last time, it wasn't sent to me, so if it could be sent to me now, it'd be appreciated.
Okay, I wasn't aware that you'd asked me for that.
So, so he's re-notifying the tenants, but we're not, we're not sending him a new hearing notice?
No.
Okay, I just want to be clear, I want to make sure, Muriel doesn't.
So just, just to make this clear, if you submit to us a signed and sealed from the testing company that they reviewed the plans, they believe that they addressed their recommendations to tackle previous issues, monitor, and in their opinion, that this tackling is sufficient to eliminate these issues, that would be enough.
So the sign and seal, it depends on what kind of a person they are, they, they sometimes aren't licensed engineers, you know, I don't know what, like a sound consultant, I don't actually know whether those are people who have seals. You know what I mean? I just don't know who the sound engineer people are, they couldn't be not licensed professional engineers, but they're sound specialists. They couldn't be not licensed professional engineers, but they're sound specialists. Right? So I don't want to force it to be signed and sealed if the person isn't a PE.
No, I'm not saying a PE.
Yeah, okay.
The guy who's licensed to do his work.
Right, but a person who's licensed doesn't necessarily have a seal. If those are PEs, architects, like, like a planner, for instance, the professional planner, they don't have seals. Right? So there, they have all sorts of designations on their title, but they don't have seals. So I just don't know what an acoustical engineer's training and seal capability is, whether they are PEs or whether there's something else. So if they're a PE, it needs to be signed and sealed.
It's not, they're not PEs.
It doesn't need to be an affidavit. Yeah.
The person who signed this is not a PE. They're, so what, it won't be...
I believe that's fine. We're going to put a condition either way.
Yeah, we will put a condition.
If it is non-compliance, we can bring them back.
Yeah, okay. All right, we have dates.
Thank you.
Item number 13, 2017, 131 BZ 7785, Gary Street, Brooklyn. That's it? Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions? Okay. Could sign him.
Good morning, Commissioners. David Rosenberg of Sheldon Lobel, PC. On behalf of the applicant, we attended yesterday's review session. And just to respond to some of the board's comments, obviously, as noted in the review session, we have reduced the height of the rear yard structure from the proposed 37'8 to 30 feet. With respect to the chair's comments about the residential elevator, the initial plan was to have this as a lop-controlled elevator using access code to be able to access specific floors. In speaking with the fire department informally, they've advised that it is better for them to make sure that the elevator has the ability to stop on all floors. But the applicant is entirely willing to commit to locking the elevator doors on the second and third floors to make sure that they're for residents only, not for community facility use. And there will be signs posted that the elevators do not stop on these floors. But that the option that if the fire department ever needed the access, they would be able to open it.
I'll ask, I'll ask fire department to comment on that. Okay.
And with respect to, unfortunately, the project architect could not be here today because of illness. But I asked him to clarify with respect to the lockable door at the mikvah area, between the mikvah area and the mechanical rooms, the meter rooms. It will be locked. There will be an alarm door there that's locked with a panic bar that would set off an alarm for emergency egress, but would be locked for users of the mikvah. In terms of building maintenance, it is one actual maintenance company that will be maintaining the entire building, both the community facility portion and the residential portion of this building. And they're going to be the only ones who have access to that space.
So wait, so the locked door, it's not shown yet on the plans?
No, we can revise the plans to make sure to clarify that it's a locked door.
No, but I don't know that there's a door. A door in the corridor in the cellar? There's no door.
I think when we were discussing it, now that we know that this laundry room is going to be only for mikvah purposes.
Yes.
The residents don't need to access the cellar space. And we were suggesting maybe having a door where the laundry wall and the restroom wall kind of... Yeah, that...
Yeah. We can put a door there. I'd also note, though, that, but to get to the sprinkler, these meter rooms, there is another door there before you get to those two rooms.
No. No, you go down the staircase or you take the elevator, let's say. And then it gives you free access to the mikvah. So the whole point is to put a door, so...
Right opposite the stairwell door, C. So there's that corridor that's coming out of the wash area towards the elevators. So just put a door there, so that way, and that's only for emergency exit.
That's not a problem.
Sign saying emergency exit, so that, and then the other elevator provides the clear access to the sprinkler and electric meter and other things.
That should not...
Which is connected to the residential.
Yeah, that should not be a problem. Not being the architect, I can't represent that. That's not going to create any new access issues. But assuming that that's not a problem, we will revise the plans to include a locked door there. All right, as Vice Chair Chanda mentioned, that with respect to the laundry room, the questions that were there, the laundry room that's in the cellar specifically for mikvah purposes, the residential units above have their own. And then with respect to the question, to the chair's question about peak occupancy, the number is, it's 435 peak for weekday morning. That, essentially, the chair's count, I think, was that it seems like a lot of people. And it is, but that's the peak number of what, of what this is designed for. Will this be the case every day, Monday through Thursday, 52 weeks a year? I don't know if that will necessarily be the case. But this was designed, understanding that during the busier times of year, especially around the high holidays, that that is what the peak occupancy would be.
So it's supposed to be representing high holiday times?
And to represent what peak occupancy would be. For the synagogue, it's building for its programmatic need, has to build for what it expects, for what it reasonably expects maximum occupancy to be currently and for the next five years. And that's what this is.
Okay.
And then I, so Vice Chair Chanda brought up the 2009 case regarding the synagogue and ballpark. So that one, the resolution is not particularly, doesn't really talk about the relationship of the use between the congregants and the mikvah. But I think, and Mr. Lobel, who was the attorney on that matter, is here, who can talk about it a little bit more. But also, and I think this was brought up yesterday during the executive session, that the space in the mikvah isn't really what's driving the waivers here. And that it's, what's pushing the waivers here is really the first floor prayer rooms, which we talked about, and the programmatic need of having those between, near the mikvah, having the prayer rooms near the mikvah is what's really addressed by the 2009 case.
But the prayer rooms arguably could have been in the cellar. So to say that it's not driving the waivers isn't really accurate.
Well...
There's no windows in those prayer rooms.
I think what I was trying to get at is that even if we reduce the footprint of the mikvah, I thought it programmatically...
Right, that's if the mikvah's there.
If, with the mikvah being there. If the mikvah is not there, that's a different question. Then you can have the prayer room all the way down.
Obviously, yes. So, let me just rephrase that.
So I just want to be clear.
Yeah. That the mikvah is certainly a programmatic need of the synagogue to have that mikvah as part of the religious worship, to have the mikvah. So, yes, the mikvah is driving the waivers insofar as if the mikvah weren't in the cellar, we could theoretically have prayer rooms down the cellar and bring down the height. But that's not the scenario we're talking about. In any case, the mikvah is going to be there as part of a programmatic need. And even talking about reducing it slightly and maybe moving one of the offices from the second floor down there doesn't actually bring down the issue of the waiver in the back because we're not actually shrinking the floor plates.
Right. All right, then there was the other question about materials. Finished materials on the sidewalls are not shown.
Okay, we'll have the architect address that.
In other words, the architect will show that on the drawing?
Yes.
Okay. And then also, also the architect needs to, there were other comments, right, about the dimensions on the section don't match. And, okay, the cellar door, okay. Are there any speakers on this? Yeah, yeah. But any members of the public on this one? No, this is, what's the address here? This is 7785 Gary Street. No? All right, so, Fire Department, just...
Good morning, Fire Department.
Good morning. So the question has to do with, Mr. Rosenberg said that in speaking to Fire Department, the issue was, we have two elevators in this building, one that's only for the synagogue.
Yes.
And one that's for the residential building.
Right.
And we were trying to prevent residents from interacting with the users of the synagogue, right?
Right.
So we, we had talked about having the elevator have no stops in the synagogue level that are elevator, that are, sorry, residential elevator. And, yeah.
Okay. He was, I, he was speaking with earlier. And we, because that elevator serves the entire building, we need access for that elevator to go on all floors. There is the fireman's service key in the elevator that will, once we put our key in the 1620 key, it would override all command and make us, and allow us to stop on the synagogue's floors and the residential floors. I know he also asked me on the corridor side of the elevator if they can close the opening. And I advised him, he can't, that's not permitted. They can lock, provide a keyed lock on the corridor side.
Sorry, on the corridor side of...
Of the, oh, it's residential lobby.
No, so, for example, if you look at the second floor and the third floor.
Oh, yes, the second, the third floor.
The second and the third floor, where the elevator would directly open to the synagogue.
Right. But they can, yes, so on the, on synagogue side, they can provide a keyed lock on the door. So in that, we, on this floor, Fire Department, we can put our key in, unlock it, and enter the elevator.
And only Fire Department has that?
That is correct. Well, whoever, the maintenance crew, they are allowed to have the 1620 key to be able to do maintenance if they ever need to be done. But there is a standard keyed lock called 1620. And the locksmith all know that. And so we will be able to open it from the tenant's side of the elevator or on the elevator side.
So I'm just a little bit trying to understand how this works with the Fire Department.
Sure.
So there's two elevators. And the issue is that the Fire Department does use the elevator?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and so, and that the idea of only being able to gain access via elevator to one portion of the building and then having to switch over to another side to gain access through another portion isn't desirable?
No, it's not.
Okay.
And since this elevator serves all the entire building, this is the primary elevator we would use.
Right.
And again, we do the elevators and we program not to stop on that, those floors, the synagogue floors. But our key overrides that command, that we can stop on that floor and go from there. Now, it's not only operations that has just the key, it's also EMS. So in the event the EMS need to go, as well as the private EMS services. I know the Jewish community has their own. They have 1620 key. So it's easy for them also to access the floor.
Okay. Okay, understand. Okay, thank you. Yeah, so, yeah, so this should be, thank you very much. So the architect needs to add a note on the plan to that extent, to the extent that the elevator will have keyed locks from the outside 1620 lock? Right. 1620 lock. Okay, so, and to indicate that on each floor, that's not the residential floors.
And so it's the cellar, the second and the third floor?
Correct. Cellar, second and third, yeah. All right. So I don't know if there's, so we still have open WRP issues?
Yeah, there's one back and forth between the applicant team and the Department of City Planning regarding whether or not this, the subject property can adequately answer one of the waterfront resiliency program consistency goals. Because the condition with part of the, part of the rear portion of the building is in Zone X without a design flood elevation. So there's no way to calculate that wouldn't result in adverse impact on the uses in the building.
No way to calculate, sorry, what?
So, as I understand it, the issue is that to enable to calculate whether or not we're consistent with 6.2 requires starting off from the design flood elevation. And that has impacts on the uses that are below it. Here, there is no actual design flood elevation because of, because we're in Zone X. City Planning had initially suggested using a different design flood elevation from a nearby zone. But that would impact the uses on the ground floor and the cellar.
So then...
So there's some back and forth that we're hoping to resolve.
We're going to try to call this week, like from the staff lab.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right, then, so we should give some more time for some back and forths. But we need to get the drawings amended. And I think that was really it, right? Yeah, it's just amending the drawings as we discussed and then clearing up the WRP issues, right? So what can we do?
We could do, how about April hearing?
Yeah, April 3rd? No, sorry, what is that?
This one has 24, 23, and this one 21.
We could do it, this doesn't have a lot for us to check, so...
Okay. So next hearing, we could do April 9th with a submission March 20th.
So in your submission letter, in your cover letter, can you please be very specific about what's been changed on the drawings? And now I'm going back to what will eventually become standard for us. The changes that are made to the drawings need to be bubbled. And the drawings need to be dated. And the, there's one set of bubble drawings and one set of clean drawings in case that's the drawing that we end up accepting, okay? So it's essential that it be bubbled and that on your cover letter, you indicate what the changes are. And you're not bubbling them, please. The architect bubbles them and tells you what the changes are.
Okay.
Or tells us, actually. A letter from the architect is really the best. Architect bubbles, architect provides a list of changes, then you just attach your list to your submission letter. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 14, 2017-244BZ 2208 Baller Avenue, the Bronx. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions? Okay, so please sign. If we have another case issue. Okay, okay. Yeah, that's fair. Thank you.
Good morning. Eugene Pillman, on behalf of the Co-op City Baptist Church. We attended your, we attended your executive session. And we made great efforts to have the surveyor come here, but they could not attend, so they provided a letter clarifying, clarifying this survey. Please pass that down. As stated in the letter, all elevations on the October 2018 survey are in NAVD 88. The additional notes were included to provide clarity for different end-users, especially the Bronx Stadium and et cetera. But as we affirmed in point one on the passed out letter and highlighted in bold, all elevations are in NAVD 88.
Okay. The notes were intended to clarify, and all they did was confuse because they're conflicting.
The notes, it might be standard notes that carried over onto this document. That's a possibility. But regardless, they vehemently affirm that all elevations are in NAVD 88. And that any confusion is due to excess information for these...
Did we get a revised plan?
Revised survey?
Yeah, revised plans, plans, not survey.
Oh.
Yes.
Well, I don't know, if we got revised plans as of yesterday?
No.
No. That's what he's asking. No, no, so it's a different question, right?
So the note that's on the plan, it contradicts itself. And I have copied the note, and it says all elevations shown here... says all elevations shown here are referred to the North American Vertical Stadium of 1988 in NAVD 88. At each level, two elevations, yeah, that's my note. At each elevation, you gave us, or the architect gave us, two elevations, two numbers.
Could you clarify that, Victor?
So I'm not sure which one is which.
The NAVD?
Say your name for the record.
Victor Boglason, architect. The elevations that we gave are height elevations, so the base and the subsequent elevations. Is that what you're referring to?
There are two different numbers, two different eleva, one of them it says EL, which I understand?
Elevation?
Elevation. The other one is, it's an elevation too. So which one of these is the NAVD 88?
Sorry.
They're both NAVD 88.
Which drawing are you? Can you tell us which drawing you're looking at, so we can follow along?
Thank you, thanks. What page, ma'am?
Hold up.
And the drawing date, I'm assuming that was the submission 24th.
It's now? You have to pull the plans. If you look at the section of the two elevations on P10.
Yeah.
You see there are two numbers, 15, 6, and where it says two sidewalk, the east flood diagram?
Oh, there's one in parentheses and one in brackets?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
How can we differentiate between these? It should be a legend specifying which one is which.
So there's 15?
I think the parentheses is NAVT, right?
No.
Yeah, there's 15 feet, 6 inches, which is minus 3 feet from the main elevation. Is that your concern?
Yeah, so the 3 feet is measured off of what?
It's measured off of the main elevation.
What do you mean the main elevation?
It's just to, it's just to give you a reference that it's lower. But we can take it off if you want to, if we just want to use the?
No, 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 it's only to make it clear, so.
It's just to give you a sense that, okay, it's below a?
So when you say the main elevation, you're setting ground at zero?
Exactly.
And ground is NAVD 88?
That's correct.
18, 6, or I can't see it, but 18 something?
18 foot, 6 inches.
That's correct.
So, and the reason that we know it's NAVD 88 is the note on the bottom.
Right.
Says elevation shown here refer to the North American Vertical Stadium of 88, and then in parentheses it says NAVD 88. You could read that both ways. You could say everything in parentheses is in NAVD 88, or?
That's right.
What you're saying is that the sort of abbreviated terminology is NAVD 88. I think that's why it's a little confusing.
The right way to express NAVD 88 elevations is to write this, L, for example, 12. When it says EL 12, that means elevation 12. If you put it in any different form, you have to provide explanations for that. And the reason I mention this is because both of the forms that are given here, the parentheses, 5, 10, and then negative 12 feet, 8 inches, both of them is not the standardized form to express an elevation.
We will take it off.
No, but so, no, 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 don't take it off, but so, because I don't know that we need?
No, 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 no.
Whoa, 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 okay. So let's continue, because I don't want to mess with the drawing.
No, no, just provide an explanation.
Yeah, 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 just a second. Let's hear the rest of the case, because I don't want this to have to come back if it's only about something where I actually, I have to admit that I understood, because when I looked at ground floor and I see ground floor is zero, then I know he's setting zero, so we know how tall the building is above grade. Because I'm actually much more interested in, and I need that number, I want to know that the building is, for example, that was my question, is the building 35 feet high?
That's right.
Or is it 44, 6 above grade? And I was aware, because I could see ground floor elevation is zero, right?
That's right.
I know that it's also at NAVD, my concern was, I wasn't sure whether the 18, 6 that he's showing as NAVD 88 was actually NAVD 88, because the survey is so confusing, and I didn't know if therefore you were doing a conversion, or whether you were just using the number that was shown on the survey. That was my concern.
Right.
But I don't want to require drawings to be amended if we're, if we have nothing else to do, okay?
Yeah.
So let's just keep going and see if there's anything else that needs to be added to the drawings, okay?
Thank you.
I would also like to address the width of the sidewalk. We've made efforts to contact Department of Transportation. We sent several emails, and I spoke to Mr. Briceo Talisik, who's the director of the builders waiver program. He informed me, I mean, he informed me that they have no issue with it as proposed, and when I asked him to provide something in writing, he said they have to send it to their GIS unit in order to map out the street and the bus turns and radius, and then they'll send me something in writing, but we have not yet received it. But in response to the board's executive session, we've actually conducted a pedestrian analysis using the proposed 5'7" width on the eastern side of the portion. So if Mr. Andrew Valeri could address that. That current width, even though there's actually a program at DOT, it's called a community facility sidewalk, sidewalk expansion program, and for certain community facility uses, they actually allow them to increase their sidewalk presence in order to accommodate, I guess, a higher traffic or certain uses. You know, we're trying to confirm in writing that they're okay with it, but in the event that they are not, our position is that the proposed 5'7" sidewalk width will be sufficient to address.
Thank you. Andrew Valeri, Stonefield Engineering and Design, 584 Broadway, Suite 310. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New York. And as Eugene has mentioned, we did do an analysis of the sidewalk along the, I guess that's the north side of the sidewalk, when you're going towards Hunter Place. It is 5'7" in width, and I think it's an astute comment about how that could provide adequate width for the amount of pedestrians the sidewalk is gonna generate. So what we did was, we took full occupancy of the worship hall and the Sunday school, which is 317 people. We actually increased it by a little bit, just to be a little more conservative, so we analyzed 350 pedestrians in this stretch of sidewalk. We assumed a walking speed that's indicative of elderly people and also schoolchildren, which is probably accurate for the demographic that we have at the facility. In accordance with industry standards, we also took a couple deductions in that width, because there is 5 feet, 7 inches of width, but you don't walk with your shoulder along the building, you don't tiptoe along the curb line. So we did take the 3 feet of deductions from that. We also assumed that all 350 people that are gonna be walking in this sidewalk occur within a 15-minute period, which may or may not be the case based on how people arrive to church. So based on all of those conservative analyses, we resulted in a level of service D, which is an okay, an okay level of service for the way the sidewalk operates.
That's with the 350?
That's with the 350.
Okay.
Just to wrap up previous reports that my office has done, I wanted to submit another parking study for this development.
This is in addition to the?
Yes. Yes. So there's gonna be three, three documents in this packet. The first is the parking study that's most recently been revised and submitted to the board, dated January 23rd, 2019. There's another study dated February 11th, that was just finished yesterday. And then there, the third piece of this packet is all of the backup data from the various parking counts that we've done.
Thank you.
Is there a report of the pedestrian analysis that you were just discussing? That would be super helpful, thank you.
So, to go all the way back from when this project started, it's been around for a while, in the end of 2017, the project was looked at as a Baptist church, and we analyzed parking on Sundays, because that's when a Baptist church generates people. However, as time has gone, the application's been more formalized, and there's a lot of other things that are being proposed in this building. So the report that was dated January 23rd contains an analysis of how much parking the other uses in the building would generate, such as the daycare, such as the after-school program, and any other, any of the other weekday or Saturday worship services that they are providing. What the report dated February 11th contains is the on-street parking and parking conditions in the adjacent garage, how those operate on a typical weekday and on Saturday. So what we find is that if you take the amount of parking that's anticipated to be generated by all these different uses throughout the day, all the different permutations of where there's overlapping, if you take the critical condition for that, the maximum amount of parking to be generated, and you look at the parking garage, there's enough space in the parking garage at all times to support this development, Sunday, Saturday, weekday. The one thing I want to note is that the weekday count that we did, it was on a Wednesday, and the operations that they are proposing on Wednesday are significant, because there is a midweek worship that happens on Wednesday in the middle of the day, there's a Bible study that happens on Wednesday. So everything that we studied incorporates the most conservative times of day, days of week, and finds that there's sufficient parking in the parking garage next door to support the project.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So, on your February 11th, it says table 2, observe Sunday on-street parking utilization. That does not include the parking garage, that's just street parking?
No, that's, it's, it's, that's actually just looking at the parking garage. On-street, there's not a lot to choose from, there is a handful at certain times. Really, the point of this study is that the parking garage has everything that this development needs.
And they have a reduced price in the parking garage?
Do.
And how much is that for? Just $2, right?
$2.
Right, and they have an agreement, we, this is all conversation, they have an agreement with the parking garage.
The agreement for the $2 on the parking garage.
And I really, I actually think that the parking garage operator is very happy to be accommodating this use there.
Okay.
So that's my understanding from prior hearings. But doesn't this also show that, given that you do have all of the availability in the parking garage during the week, you actually have more, greater availability on-street at all times than you do on the weekend? So you actually have more of a choice during the week?
That's correct.
To park on-street or in the garage?
That's correct.
During the week? Yes. I said during the week. Okay. Okay, good. Thank you very much.
There were, there were several?
Sorry, sorry, did you want to mention about the DOT?
Sure, I mean, I do think the pedestrian study is very helpful, because what it tells us is the level of service isn't, isn't it, well, it's not an F. Right, it's not even an E. So it, the level of service with 350 people crowding onto the street to try to make their way in that direction, or they're not all going in that direction arguably, but that is the direction of the parking garage. That's something that, Mr. Valeri, I just want to make sure, the assumption on that 350 people should be that most of them are walking, or some large percentage anyway, are walking towards the parking garage, right?
So the way we did it was the arrival, so people leaving the parking garage and walking towards it. So the majority of it is, the way the analysis works, it looks at total pedestrians in a section, two-way. So if you have, I guess, the analysis for people arriving, like, from, coming from the parking garage, is the same as the opposite of that, people leaving the facility and going towards the parking garage. The analysis would be the exact same.
Okay, but, okay.
We did analyze people going in both directions, though.
Okay, but what I mean to say is, they come out of the front door, or, let's say, they come out of the front door after an event, so the event, what I'm thinking of is sort of, all the kids are leaving some sort of a program at the same time as many people leaving services, for example, that, maybe that's what you were thinking when you thought about 350? And there, and the main entrance is at the center of the block, where it's very, a good wide sidewalk. And that, a lot of the times, when we see these pedestrian analyses, the distribution of who turns left and who turns right is pretty even, because people are sort of parking all over the place, or walking, right? But in this case, many of the people, if not most, are turning left when they come out of the front door and walking to the parking garage, so?
They go straight across the crosswalk? They're crossing Hunter Place there?
No, but the main lobby entrance?
Yes.
To the building is in the middle of the building, right? So aren't they getting out of the lobby entrance, and either their choice is to turn left or right?
Mm-hmm.
And in this case, because it's in the parking garage, towards, the parking garage is towards the left?
Yeah, you'd be leaving.
And so it seems to me that, you know, in terms of the split, you probably have like an 80/20 split, 80% at least, of the people walking left.
Yes, we assumed 100% people walk.
Oh, you even assumed 100%. So, but so, the question is, so you assumed 100% of the people, so you said you're doing arrivals, right? So arrivals were, but arguably, that's a little bit more of a trickle than when they're all leaving an event?
We assume that they all come at the same 15 period?
A 15-minute period, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so they're, and you're assuming 100% come from the parking garage? Okay.
I'll be able to summarize this in a brief memo and then submit it to the board. I have?
Thank you.
Something ugly, if you want that.
You've been doing such a great job, I don't know.
I think you picked up the worst-case situations.
That's what I was hoping.
Yeah, no, I, that, and I just wanted to make sure that it was, I mean, it's great you picked 100%, that probably is super conservative, because some people will park right around where they find a spot, right?
Thank you.
To save $2. Right?
I know a few of them.
Yeah. Okay. So, so, yes, in terms of the, so the reason that the DOT bulb out is less of an issue is because that's what we really needed, is was the level of service of pedestrian activity on that narrow point, and so, so everybody did that, so I think that was really responsive and helpful.
Okay.
And because at the last hearing, we also talked about with the architect modifying the design of the building, and then it doesn't seem necessary when level of service is at D and not F. Okay, okay, good. So the other question we had, so we still are waiting for DEP on this, unfortunately.
There were some plan comments as well.
Okay.
Add an acoustic fence detail, which we'll do, add a note that there'll be no lighting, amplification on the roof.
The lighting can be emergency lighting, but no lighting for events, right?
And a note to sound attenuation measures that DEP is gonna sign off, we believe it's gonna be 36 decibels, but whatever the final outnumber is, we will note. And there was a question about the height waiver, so?
Yeah.
24, 5, 21, it starts at 25 feet, and then it's a one-to-one sky exposure plane. And if you look at the zoning diagrams that were provided, they do capture a portion, they do capture a portion of the third floor, so it's not, it's not only mechanicals and elevator bulkheads that'll be caught, but actual, actual uses, and I'll let Victor clarify.
Okay. Okay, so then it doesn't really matter about, so?
We will, we will require a waiver of 24, 5, 21.
Right, no, it wasn't, I was just seeing if the extent of the waiver is only really, whatever I said, 35, 38, 4 versus 47, 6, but it's penetrating, so it doesn't really matter, right? Because sometimes what we, we like to reduce the current scope of the waiver by saying the permitted height is the, to the roof, and this, and I actually, when I read the zoning resolution, it says enclosures for mechanical, but I don't know if DOB interprets that to be mechanical rooms. So that was the part that was tricky for me, so, a lot of, because in sort of in the old days, before there were flood problems, you put your mechanical on the roof and you put a fence around it, and they were okay with the fence not being floor area, right? And not, and then also not being height. But now, more and more people are building rooms up there, and I don't know if DOB has caught up with that in terms of whether that's allowed to penetrate the sky exposure.
They're allowing us to put up rooms, virtually all buildings that we do now, we've got the mechanical rooms on the roof, and they're allowable.
So they're allowing, they're treating them as enclosures that can penetrate the sky exposure plane?
Exactly.
Ah, okay, so, all right, so I think maybe that's a note we make on our resolution. Yeah, so that, but the note in our resolution is simply that, you know, the height to the top of the bulkheads and mechanical rooms is 47.6, which may be permitted obstructions, DOB to determine, but otherwise, the height of the roof is 38.4, right? And just to clarify, because I, because one of my concerns is if we say in our resolution 47.6, and they come, and the applicant-
That increases-
Try, yeah, so the applicant potentially can add a room up there, and DOB won't know that that's not the scope of our waiver, right? Okay, so they would have to come back for that, okay? All right, great, thank you. So I think we went over everything. Are there any speakers on this? No, okay, so, sorry? No, we can't because we have open environmental, so what are we, we're saying mid-March, they promised, so I guess we put this on for the-
Promise date?
Sorry?
No, we have a promise date of March 13th.
Yeah, so we could put it on for the following week, arguably? I don't know if there's, do you think there's back and forth on this, the questions with DEP?
We'll have the environmental consultant-
Because that's the question, if they're just, it's a promised review of noise, I don't think we had anything else, right? Normally, there's not a lot of back and forth on noise because they already are doing an acoustical closure for the roof and for the mechanicals already enclosed, so, right?
State your name. My name is Keun Chan Oh, spelled K-E-U-N.
Okay, you weren't here before, yes, sworn in. Raise your hand.
You can do it from there.
You can do it from there. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the board and to respond on to the board member questions?
So, hi, so, yeah, it's just the question is, you have these open DEP issues, do you think that there is more than one round of submission? Have you already submitted on that?
I already submitted.
Okay.
And they made comments on the report, previous report, and I follow everything they need to get the answer for it. And the way I see, the two issue is-
Wait, do you expect them to send you something back?
Well, let him finish, I want to hear the two issues. Wait.
Out of the noise, out of whole EAS, noise was the biggest issue, and the WRP was the biggest issue, and WRP was done.
Oh, okay.
And for the noise issue, I only see two things, the third-floor playground, and that is, I believe, resolved through the sound barrier.
Right.
The other one is the background noise, the L10 noise being above 80 dash point, so that issue also resolved by having the highest soundproof window. And also, design itself helps to reduce the indoor noise by having as little as possible number of windows. On the backside, there is no window, so, any noise from within the window is very limited to the outside toward the vegetation area. And also, any outside noise from the train, trucks are limited because of the number of window and small window and the window dashboard.
Okay, so, but the question which Mr. Chaveta just asked was, do you think you have more than one round?
I don't believe so. That two issue, I answered it accordingly, so.
Did they give you recommendations and then you followed those recommendations in your submission?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a comment letter-
All right, so, sorry?
There's a comment letter in the file, actually, if you want to see it, has eight comments.
Right, but I think they responded to the comment letter, that's the reason I'm trying to say, can we just put this on for like, March, the end of March, is the question.
That's what I was getting at.
There are 22 in March, month, we have five hearings.
Oh, oh.
It's a big month.
Okay, let's do beginning of April.
Okay.
So, we can do a continued hearing on April 9th, for submission on March 20th.
There are no available dates in March?
It's just a very rough schedule for us.
You have two special hearings.
April 9th, March 20th, okay.
Right, okay, and just to let everybody know, because it's really environmental that holds us up there, so, you know, so that we could do this arguably sooner, and that we can certainly do a close-in vote if everything environmentally is buttoned up. And I want to just make sure that with respect to the acoustical enclosure, we have the information on what that acoustical material is, okay? And, okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming, appreciate everyone's coming. Thank you. 10-minute break?
You want 10-minute break?
10-minute break.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're on, sorry. Okay, item number six, back on the record, item number 15, 2017, 258 BZ, 6161 Broadway, The Bronx. Uh-oh, what happened there? Okay, raise your right hand, you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond on to the board member questions. That's okay.
Just hand it out, revised plans, and I'm going to go- Oh, Elise Foladere from Eric Palatnik, PC, on behalf of the applicant, I always forget my name, sorry. So I'm going to go through each of the revised sheets of the things we did, so, if you'll turn to Z004, the planting area was revised to four feet wide in the rear. The curb details are added on Z009. Additionally, on Z- There's a curb detail at the bottom.
Okay.
Additionally, on Z009, the bowler detail was changed to a U bumper, and it's also referenced on Z004 at the dispensers.
U bumper, okay. Okay.
Okay. The subdividing line was just left from an old- I don't know what to call it, just an older version of everything, so they took it out-
Good.
-to provide no confusion on that. So it's been taken out of Z001, Z004, Z007, and Z008. You asked about separate, the separate parking lot, how is the private parking lot controlled? We discussed it, and we added a security chain with a stop sign at the dumpster enclosure on Z004, which will be controlled by a parking attendant.
004. Sorry, oh, I see, oh, you put it all the way forward, okay. Here, you change the stop sign, okay.
And then, there's a note at the top right, if you don't, top left. So on Z009, there should be a, the wall says to be rebuilt, so.
Sorry, on 09?
Top left.
Top left, existing masonry wall to be rebuilt.
Oh, oh.
Thank you.
It took me a while to find the bullets.
Yeah.
Okay, really, they want to rebuild the whole masonry wall? It's just a way of saying, we'll take care of it.
Yeah, we're just trying to be, we're going to make sure it's not all cracked, that's the way of saying.
Okay.
And I think that was all of your questions, besides DOT, which I am not in control of.
Right, DOT has not responded yet on the traffic study. Okay, so I, so I guess my question to the commissioners is, so, this is a special permit, but it's effectively a continuation of variances that have been going on a long time. So one way we could look at this, that the improvements discussed that are shown on the drawing should be done now, that's a way to, like, finish off the site all beautifully, which is always my preference, but I want others to respond. And then the other question is, well, and that would therefore give DOT time to respond to, to look at the materials.
I would like to say that this one was pretty much, because it was discontinued, like a complete rigot. Rigot, yeah.
Oh, so is, so is this one going, so I'm just looking at the-
The building exists there.
The building, yeah, there's not very much on the site.
But I'm just saying that this one had more work because it was one of those discontinued stations, and that's why we've-
Okay, so I guess that's my question, when you look at, now, I don't have the images in front of me of what the status of things are, this is a site where you're going to need to put in everything, right?
Yeah, I'm just saying that it might-
No, no, so it's a major construction job, right? So the dispensers aren't even in, is that correct?
I don't want to answer that because I would want to-
I don't think they are. I don't think they are either. My images that are, the satellite images, to remind me about the site, shows nothing in place except for the building.
Yeah.
So that means a lot of work has to be done.
And the gas vendor is listed in the signage.
Right, okay.
I think it might be mobile.
The vendor is listed, but that's it?
But that's it.
There's nothing on site, so, okay, so this is a going-forward job, okay? So then-
Right, there's nothing, really. Yeah.
Okay, so then, so then, my question is, are people comfortable with the traffic study as it was submitted as opposed to waiting for DOT to review it? Because I don't look at this site as one that's a particularly traffic-conflict-oriented site, like we have some others where there's five lanes of different roads converging right at the gas station. Here, it's a simple intersection.
And I believe it's close to the expressway as well.
Right, but I mean, you have a simple intersection with simple curb cuts, it doesn't look to me that it's really that big of an issue.
No.
Right?
I don't think it is.
Yeah, okay, so then, are there any speakers on this? So I, so all of this has been submitted, right?
No, I can do a second call and submit it, I just wanted to make sure they were everything.
Yeah, no, it's really good, thank you. Thank you for being speedily responsive and to your-
Thank the architect.
And the architect, who probably stayed up late doing this, yes.
Revised date on it also.
And the revised date is-
212-
Yes, it's okay.
It says what, 212-19 on the drawings? So, okay, so what I'd like to do is make a recommendation that we close this and even vote on it, yeah?
I can second call and submit.
Yeah, yeah, no, but, but I, that's what I'm trying to-
Sorry.
Okay, so we can do a, we can close, no, we don't want to do that, so we'll close, we'll do a second call, we'll close and vote on it.
You want your second call?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Miss Foladere, just alert us when you've submitted it.
Yeah, I'm going to call it.
So, but again, the drawings are 212-19, 212-19, okay, thank you.
Item number 16, 2017, 291 BZ, 1367 East 26th Street, Brooklyn, raise your right hand, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond on to the board member questions? Yes, you do. Yeah, yeah. You're going to call them separately.
Minor corrections on the single-family homes.
Just please state your name.
Wait a minute, we seem to be short on-
I know, I didn't-
-handouts.
Because this was done this morning. I have another one if you want.
Yeah, well, then you can't do it. No, but actually, was this submitted because I'm online?
It was submitted electronically, everything was just submitted.
This is the one I showed this morning.
Yeah, yeah, no, but so you can, I can look at it online, here, you have to share with Darren.
Apologies, we, it was submitted and we forgot to bring down all of the sets that were brought.
This is 291, is that right?
291, so, good afternoonish, J. I. P. for the applicant. I attended yesterday's review session, I responded to the comments, in particular, we submitted electronically, we added the dimension of the step-back at the rear yard to show the 31-foot, 7-inch rear yard at the step-in.
Tell us on what drawings.
Sheet A1 and A3.
A1 is the site plan, you added that 31 foot?
Right, A3 is the first floor plan, which is over, I have to change it on.
Okay.
The cellar floor dimension, which is sheet A2, we corrected it to be 27.3 instead of 27.4.
Sorry, at A2?
Sheet A2.
What did you do, oh, 27.3?
27.3 instead of 27.4. On sheet A3, where we included the new terrace right off of the den, as discussed yesterday at the board.
Okay.
And then, on all of the sheets throughout, we included the note that says, "Floor joists and exterior walls remain as shown, or the special permit is void." And that's on all sheets.
Okay.
The plans before you have the, actually have an incorrect date, the plans that were submitted have the date of 21119, which was referenced in our submission.
This is 122-19.
I know, these, the printed copy is the reason you don't have-
21119, yeah.
The reason you don't have enough copies is the printed copy, they put the wrong date, we changed it, we just put the, we submitted electronically with the correct date, our copies will be submitted to the board.
So I, I'm looking at it online and I see 21119.
I believe those were all the comments yesterday.
Did we say stairs and terrace is subject to DOB approval?
It says.
Sorry, what did you say?
Stairs and terrace is subject to DOB approval?
It says it, yeah. Stairs and terrace is subject to DOB approval. A3, there's a note with arrows.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much, appreciated, everybody is okay?
So, before we move on to anything that we may move up, just a point of clarification, this initially came in as two separate applications, this and the house next door. Throughout the course of the application, it's been changed where we have merged the application to one, under application number 2017, 291 BZ, which is the one we're discussing right now. So this application will be the one going forward, the lot merger and everything will go under this bin and this house number, or the house numbers will merge, but it'll be this block and lot, therefore, with the board's permission going forward, we'll withdraw the other one, that's-
So this block and lot and this address?
This block and lot, this address, it's actually, the whole application was merged, we corrected all the documents a while back to show, you know, we provided all the surveys for both houses, we provided site plans for both houses, all the analysis was for both houses.
But you know already that they're going to be, that the, wherever it is, the borough president or the DOB are going to consider this to be 1360-
It'll be 136-
61?
It will be 1367, and it's probably going to be, I believe it's Lot 19 that they're going to retain.
All right, so, so, just to note that for everyone, okay. All right then, so are there any speakers on this? So I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Chaveta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant on condition, which is already stated on the drawings, removal of existing walls and joists in excess of those shown on the approved plans will void the special permit. And then, just to note to council, the merger of the lots and, that's reflected also in 2017, 291 BZ, that's just for council to remind them when they're writing the resolution.
Okay, so I'm going to call-
That'll be, I'm going to withdraw, they're going to call me now and I'm going to withdraw on the record.
No, 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 this is a note to our council, so when they're writing the resolution, they're reminded to, that, that it's a combination of those two buildings, right?
Mm-hmm.
So on that motion to grant.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Okay, so item number 17, 2017-292 BZ, 1363 East 26th Street, Brooklyn, so this is gonna...
Good afternoon, J. Goldstein, for motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Okay. So, for a motion to withdraw?
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Okay. Item number 18, 2017-298 BZ, 14 White Street, Manhattan?
You don't need to be sworn in because I'm gonna adjourn.
Yeah.
Ally Carreri for Brever Charick. We requested to adjourn to March 26th with the submission date of March 6th.
I don't know whether, did we already allow for that? I don't know how many we have on...
We, but we talked, we talked about it. We talked about it several weeks ago.
Yeah, but... I know, but this is something where there's financials. So, whatever we might have talked about, we need to make sure that Commissioner Otley Brown's okay with the financials. There's also...
Yes.
Structural, right?
There, yeah, Commissioner Ashetta's here on March 26th. We haven't added any variances that include financials.
Right, it's just, there's a continued one.
There are no new... Oh, wait, there's, there's Cypress Avenue, is that a financial?
No.
No?
Well, kind of, but not too many.
That's the only new variance.
Right, and there's a continued Crosby Street.
Yes, that's right.
Okay. But this is also the March hearing.
This is March 26th.
This is, right, this is what the month that we have...
This is the last, this is the last hearing in March.
I know, but in the interest of exhaustion.
Can I just insert that having spoken to staff, our client canceled his vacation to be at the March 26th hearing?
It just, it's, it's a quick turnaround because it's two hearings the week before.
Quick turnaround, say again?
There's a quick turnaround because it's two days of hearings the week before, which just leaves like three days.
Right, so that...
That's it.
So, you know, your client's vacation schedule... No, no, but the point is that we have a hearing on the 20th?
Oh, yeah, I know, we've had, but we've, we, yes.
And so, it means that there's very little time for the commissioners to review all the cases for the 26th? So, I have to defer to Commissioner Otley Brown about that because...
Yeah.
I could do it if you could do it.
Yeah, I can do it.
Okay. Thank you so much.
We didn't ask for like too many things. It's, I believe the decisive item is the letter from the DA. If they come back with that letter...
Yeah, in terms of that, but we weren't even sure there was an A finding, right?
Yeah, I understand.
Right, so this, we're at the very beginning of finding out whether there's an A finding. So, therefore, these are longer analyses than when we already know there's an A finding and now we're working on how, like, we're working on the E, right? Right, so, all right, all right.
March 26th.
Everyone's okay with that?
I appreciate it, thank you.
Careful what you think you... Did you just sign? For the record, thank you.
No, no, not behind the scenes. I don't think we should make any agreements because we don't know what comes up, right? Usually those Tony does come around and ask me. Yes, but then you don't know what gets inserted, you know, that, yeah.
Okay. Item number 19, 2017-309 BZ, 406 Remson Avenue, Brooklyn? Raise your right hand if you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions.
Okay.
Thanks. Oh, you have to sign. Sign. State your name for the record. We gotta change this lineup. I gotta put your name. Remind me.
I'm Ed Ike for Salmon Associates. Good afternoon, board. I'm gonna start by addressing...
You're the owner, correct? No.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm gonna start by addressing the incompleteness of my submission on the lumens spread. There is no lumens outside the property.
How do you know that? How do you know that?
Well, it also states on the plan that the architect signed. It should state on the plan. There is no lumens, I'm, I'm the owner. There's no lights outside.
I think the question is, when we review these kind of projects, any of these automotive gas repair stations or whenever there's any light fixtures that's located even on the site, the light spreads out. And we want to make sure that the light that spreads out from the site, when it reaches outside the property line, it is substantially lower. Now, in this case, you know, you have residential on one side of the property, you have residential in the rear, and the rest is all street frontages. So, we want to make sure whatever light fixtures you have attached to the building or any light poles that you may have, the lights that coming from that is not spilling into the residential properties where it's creating more light than they need to have. It really should be zero at the residential property line. And, and the way we can only determine that is when we see a study that shows how the lumen is spreading, how the light is spreading from those light fixtures. May that be attached to the building or other...
I understand, but there's nothing outside of the building, it's just...
Are there lights on the building?
On the building, no.
Are there lights on, are there any lights signed?
On the ceiling of the inside of the building.
Okay, so then...
How about at the back of the building?
There's no lights.
So, it's in the back?
There's only lights inside the building itself. There's no lights outside at all.
So, you don't have any pole lights?
No pole light, nothing outside. It's pitch dark at night.
Okay.
Well, all right, so the way that you demonstrate that to us is with photographs that show all the facades of the building. And then, you walk around the perimeter of the property and you show us photographs that show, so we can see that there's actually no lights. And that goes for the rear area also, where, which has been used a lot for storage, to make sure that there are no lights attached to the rear of the building.
Okay.
But not photographs at night, you have daytime photographs.
Daytime photographs, yes.
Okay, no problem. In terms of landscaping in the rear yard, I've spoken to the members of the community, and I spoke to their attorney as well. And they would like me to propose a green area, all green, with ivy walls instead of putting trees in there. They don't, they, they're not interested in trees, but they would like, they would like grass. I spoke to the attorney...
So, so here's the thing.
Yeah.
The reason that we talked about having dense vegetation is we're trying to discourage any possibility of it being as, used as a storage area. If it's grass, it will be used as a storage area. So, we're trying to fill it up so it doesn't have any chance of being used that way. So, and you know...
Chair, we're closing the back doors.
I understand, but let's just put it this way. You have a bad track record. We have to do what we can to prevent you and your tenants from being disrespectful of the community. This is one way to accomplish at least some of it, okay? We know it's cheaper to plant grass that dies, by the way. Grass doesn't do very well on these places. And so, the shrubs and that kind of thing tend to do better. They end up taking over the back area and ensuring that it's not used for other purposes. And to say that, you know, I promise I'll be good, we don't have a good experience with you promising to be good.
I don't want to promise anything, but this is what the community requested for me to say.
Okay, well, the community, that's your word against us hearing from the community.
All right.
So, I would rather hear from them, but I also don't know how to control the use of that rear any other way than by filling it up with vegetation.
Understood.
So, okay?
The operational plan, they were submitted by the tenants. If they have to be revised, then I'll have them revise it. They said that they didn't...
What do you mean? It'll be submitted by the tenants, sorry?
The operational plan, what, what they do on the site?
The office tenant. I mean, not the office, the mechanical.
Yeah.
So, the muffler repair guy didn't submit an operational plan.
That he does hot works.
He just said he specializes in exhaust work. We do general repairs like tune-ups, brakes, strut shocks, and oil changes. Didn't mention in his submission that it also does welding. So, that's not an operational plan. And by the way, for your, so this is the part that's quite frustrating. You no longer are represented by council, and we have council here who do this kind of work all the time, right? And, and what you're doing is you're submitting to us sort of low-energy responses to our requests. And it, part of it is because you don't know, you don't do this work. So, you don't know how we're supposed to, what we expect to see. And this is going to take a long time if you do it in this kind of little bitty way, where the tenants submit also where they don't know how to respond to these questions. And so, and, and one of the problems is you, what you'll end up doing is exhausting us. And, and we potentially will decide not to allow you to use this place the way you want to be able, not to allow you to use the place. So, I strongly recommend that you engage council so that we can get these answers more efficiently. And, yeah.
The FDNY said that there was an office partition and replacement hardware. Well, the, the hardware, the Department of Buildings requested us to put just a regular closet door handle as opposed to a locking door.
On?
That was corrected on the, on the office, on the office door, because it was a means of egress. And we submitted a correction to the Department of Buildings. We didn't get the response as of yet. And in terms of the fireproofing for the building, the building, we never took on fireproofing in the building. The building was like that ever since it was built.
That doesn't matter. If your use is now a hazardous use, it needs to be upgraded to meet fire department standards. If you had a shack on the site that was made out of wood, and the shack was intended to store, I don't know, empty bottles or something like that. It's not a fire, empty glass bottle, it's not a fire hazard. And then you switch to welding and so on, your, your, your wood storage shed is no longer an acceptable building structure for that work to be done. So, if you want this work to be done here, you need to meet fire code and building code.
Understood. They were just saying that we took out the fire stopping, so we didn't take out any fire stopping.
Okay, you didn't take it out, but it doesn't mean fire code.
I don't think that's, but, no, nothing.
It says the plans do not show fire stopping of ceiling throughout premises as cited in ECB violation. They, they do not show replacement of the prohibitive door hardware as cited by, the plans don't show that, right? So, so here's the other problem, that you're coming by yourself without your architect or your engineer. That's not, that's not acceptable, because we need to speak to the professionals who are doing the work so that we can understand how the professionals are changing the site and how contractors, the actual installers, will be directed to make those changes. It can't just be you go in there with your own screwdriver and you figure, and you try to figure this out. It's not going to be acceptable. And I have to warn you that if we see this kind of not responsive behavior one more time, I'm just gonna bring this to a vote, and you're gonna lose the right to have a non-conforming use on the site. So, your tenants unfortunately will have to close their businesses at this site. We're not in favor of closing businesses, but when we have an uncooperative owner who has a bad track record, that's what we end up doing.
I, I really suggest, like, the guidance that you can get from council who's done this is invaluable.
Mm-hmm.
And, and you're at a real disadvantage because you're not very familiar with this material. So, I, I need to, I'm gonna strongly suggest that you, you get counsel. It will serve you in this case, likely serve you in this case.
And, you know, the old adage, cheap is expensive? You're going the cheap route and it's getting expensive.
I went, I went the expensive route, and it got very expensive.
But in the end, the expensive route might save you this site, right? So, imagine not being allowed to have this use on this site where Department of Buildings and Fire Department shuts you down, okay? Much more expensive than hiring counsel that might be expensive now, but saves you a lot of money in the long run.
You're right about that.
Right? This is, this is part of the cost of doing business. You have the, you've been given the right to do something that's unusual in this neighborhood, right? And in order to keep the right, you need to maintain the right to, you need to have earned the continuance of this right.
They have a privilege.
It's a privilege.
A privilege.
All right, so, on your advice, then I would have to seek...
Yes. So, okay, so, yeah, I think, are there speakers here? Did anybody from, yeah, Fire Department?
John Daly, Fire Department. First, I'd like to apologize on behalf of Mr. Grogan of the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. He was unable to attend today's hearing because he's been mandated by the state for training classes. I also'd like to reiterate, the main reason we want fire stopping or fire-rated ceiling and a sprinkler system, they are, they're chained to use as per CFO. This current CFO only allows hand tools. Now that you're doing hot work operations, that is why we want a fire-rated ceiling and a sprinklers. If they went back to the, just on the handle, we would withdraw our request for fire stopping. Thank you.
So, and, and your tenant uses hot tools, right? Hot operations because he explained that he's doing welding, and that's how you do muffler work. So, either it's not a muffler, and the place is called muffler, right? It's called...
Top-quality mufflers.
Yeah, top-quality mufflers, so I guess you need to do welding.
Yes.
Right? So, then you're going to need to...
Actually, in that area, we do have a ceiling. No fire sprinkler system, but there's a, there's a, there's a drywall ceiling.
Okay, we're not gonna go back and forth here. This is the job of a professional, right?
Yeah.
The job of a professional engineer to go in and look at, do the site inspection and determine what is necessary to comply with the fire codes that were cited by, very clearly in the letter by the Fire Department, okay? We're not gonna negotiate this, no back and forth. You just have to do this thing. Okay. And hopefully, the next time we'll have DEC be able to attend, right? Okay, and then we had our own compliance officer go out to your site on Friday and observe that there are still a lot of junk being stored on the site, and we thought the site had been cleaned up, and it hasn't been. And we saw parking already also on the sidewalk, and there's supposed to be no parking. And we did see there's a sign that says, "No parking," and cars will be towed, but we didn't see the car being towed.
Chair Person, it's hard to police everybody over there. It's very hard to police everybody. You, you can start arguing and a fight very fast, but that person that was on the sidewalk was denied any services and left.
Okay.
He did not service his vehicle.
Okay, but how long was his vehicle there?
He was waiting to come inside. Because he didn't move the car off the sidewalk, he was denied service.
Do you have a contract with a tow and service?
I do not, but the tow, but what it is, to get it towed off the sidewalk or off my curb, the police have to ticket the vehicle.
No, 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 you're talking about NYPD. We're talking about private tow.
Private tow.
Yeah, but it's, the sidewalk is not private.
It's not there.
If it's in my yard, it's private.
If it's his garage, you can call it a private tow.
If it's in my driveway, I, I ticket him and, and they get towed. I can't, I can't tow anybody off the sidewalk. I have no right to do that. Yeah, big problem.
So...
Well, in that case, you could, you could, you could call the police, and you could gather reports that shows that, those, those reports that you put in.
Commissioner, I do this all the time. I, I used to work over there. I'm working there for 35 years. And anybody who parks on the sidewalk, I call the police. By the time they come, the guy's already gone.
Right.
So, it's not, there's a shopping, there's a shopping place across the street, and they come, you know, for five minutes, they just park and they, and they leave.
But you will be able, you will be able to come back here on the next date and show a log of all the times you've called the police and tried to have compliance.
The thing is, I don't work there anymore, I have tents. But I can make them do that.
Okay. And now we have, and now you're creating a new op, in your, you're having in your operating plan, this specific act of calling the police in time. Hopefully, this, the situation corrects itself.
I hope so, but...
No, so that's the thing, is you're giving the tenants the obligation to write these little letters that you're calling an operate, operations plan. little letters that you're calling an operate, operations plan. That's not an operations plan. You're the owner of the property. You're responsible for all the violations. You know that, right? Landlord's responsible ultimately for everything, right?
Yes.
You have to create the operations plan. You have to impose on your tenants what their obligations are, and you need to write this down, and you need to submit it to us, and it will be enforced, right? And so, by you, and then if not, the board will enforce by shutting down.
Yeah, I, I got you.
Okay? Yeah, you say it, but then we don't see it, right?
I got you. And I keep telling my tenants that. I'm, I'm keeping the place open for them. It's not, it's not, I'm keeping it open for myself too, but it's more for them. It's an R6 zoning.
I know, we know it's an R6 zoning.
So?
That's the whole point. If you don't want to have this, you could put up an apartment.
I know what I can do, I know. I just told them, I mean, you guys, if things are not going to change, I'm just going to shut it down. You're not going to have to shut it down, I will.
Okay. All right. Okay, so, and there are no speakers from the public on this? No neighbors? Because we've had lots of neighbors come on this. All right, so, we need you to engage counsel. The next hearing needs to, you need to come with counsel, having worked on this, and you need to bring the engineer, or I think it's the engineer who's signing.
It's an architect.
It's an architect?
Mm-hmm.
An engineer?
Engineer.
Engineer. Engineer. Engineer. It's an engineer who's signing and sealing the drawings, all right?
Mm-hmm.
Unless there's an architect doing the drawings and he's having someone else sign, you're not supposed to do that, but?
It wasn't me doing the drawings.
Can I ask you for the, what is the status of getting a survey done for the site?
I did call Bartlett Ludlow Surveyors, and they gave me a ridiculous, a ridiculous price. So, we called up Roguski, and we're waiting on that. Roguski line survey?
I would suggest that before the next hearing, you definitely should have the survey done and have the plans revised and the signage analysis.
Signage, if you notice the pictures, the signs?
No, that's not the direction we gave you. The direction we gave you was to give us a complete dimension of the existing drawings. I mean, you need to go and measure all the existing signs that you have, and because we don't think the signs that are shown in the drawings match what is existing. So, you need to dimension the existing signs and find out if those existing signs are in compliance with the regulation. If they are not, then you need to scale those signage down. And so, that is something that your engineer can do between now and the next hearing. That is independent of the survey. But I would also suggest that you get the survey because we don't know.
Direct.
No, yes, direct. We have been directing that for a while, but, because I am a little concerned about some of the elements of the structure might be spilling into the neighboring prop, side lot, city lot. So, that's, that's really why we want you to look, do that.
I don't know if you noticed the pictures from Ted Ricketts, but the signs have been scaled down.
Right, but so?
Yeah.
The only way we can determine that, and the only way Department of Building will, will be able to assess that is once you give them the dimension drawings and sure, and that's why you need, you need a counsel, because they will tell you exactly what each one of these agencies require and how you need to provide those documents. I, I, we are not saying we don't trust you, but that's the only way technically we can make sure everybody is on the same page.
Understood.
So, we need those documentations.
And they should all be watching every video, every review session, every public hearing, this engineer.
Yes. So, and, and your, your engineer can do the same thing. A lot of the directions that we're giving are very obvious to an engineer who has experience. I, and we can't speak for this person who's doing these drawings, but if the person has experience, they'll understand what it is we're saying when we make these requests, right, or directions, right? Okay. All right, so, in terms of the site visit, though, we need the site to be clean. Because our, and our compliance officer's going to go out there again and check that the site doesn't have miscellaneous debris on it, right? It's supposed to be a clean site. You need to direct your tenants to maintain the site clean, and it can't be storing trash on the site, okay? Everything needs to be kept inside the building.
Understood.
All right, so, to give you time to hire counsel?
I'm only counseling, you want me to hire the engineer too, right?
Well, you have an engineer, it's not hired.
Who's doing the plans?
Somebody did the drawings and signed and sealed them. What?
Yeah, somebody did the plans.
So, they're not hired anymore?
They're not, no, they just did the plans for me.
Okay. So, here's the thing. You need to have engaged a person who will do the plans, file the plans, get the approvals. There's no way to get Fire Department sign off without filing drawings. So, the Fire Department requested that drawings be filed to show compliance. I'm sorry, but if you want to keep this use, you're going to have to spend some money. And if you don't want to keep the use, just let us know, and we'll deny the request to continue this use, and then you can go build an apartment building on the site. Really, big enough site.
Just as an FYI, I don't think even that will be easy, because this is such a contaminated site.
Okay. No, I'm not going to say it's not, it's going to be easy, but there are ways.
Contaminated, why? I got a clean bill of health from D.C.
I'm just telling you from what I know, from my experience working on housing projects, whenever a site is going to be built for housing and it has had auto-repair uses, you will have to do phase ones and.
I understand that.
Yeah, yeah, no, but then, but an apartment building is obviously quite a lucrative thing, right? It's a nice big site. It could be remediated and so on. We see lots of applications to remede, to build apartment buildings.
I just don't, I don't want my tenants to be, like, I, I don't, I want to give them a chance, I don't want to just shut them down.
All right, so, but so, since you're the owner of the property, you need to respond as a responsible owner of the property and engage professionals. So, yeah, your direction is to hire an architect or engineer to continue with providing the plans that are required by the board, and because the only way I can see through this is to hire counsel, because we can't just keep coming back here and giving you instructions like this, because they're not, it's not working.
Okay.
All right? All right, so, let's give time to do that work.
In the meantime, I will keep the place, you know, as clean as possible.
And also removing the curb cut. One of the curb cuts is supposed to be removed.
Yes.
Ah, okay.
The 1058th Street.
Right. So, that can also be done. For that, you don't need a counsel. You can do that right now.
Um, it's, you need special DOT permits.
That's true, weather-wise.
I don't actually know how curb, what the filings are to remove.
Um, Vice Chair, that curb cut is right where the pedestrian walkway is, so I don't know about that. If you look at it, you see, you see where the pedestrian walkway?
So, you definitely need to hire an engineer and, or a licensed architect and a counsel to get you through that process.
Also, if you come into agreements with the neighbors and they're in support, it'd be good to hear that from them, because the less we've heard from them, it hasn't been supported.
I spoke to the attorney, and I asked him to come to express himself. See, the problem is that I'm having with the neighbors is because that property in the back over there, they used to occupy it, and 20 years ago, I took it back. They used to occupy the whole, the whole back.
That's not the reason you're having problems.
This is the reason.
It's just filled with trash.
Well, there's also some other things.
Okay, that's one reason, but this is the main reason why, why I'm having all these, all these things.
So, let me just, let me just streamline this. If we, because of what we've heard last from the neighbors, if you're going to represent that there is some sort of agreement or support, it'd be best if you get it from them, if we hear from them, or if they submit something in writing to that effect.
Understood.
Okay? Great.
So, what I'm concerned about is missing the planting season also. So?
I'm going to miss it.
Yeah. So, I, I'd like to put this on to give time for there to be planting in like April, May. That's your window, April, May, or it's too hot, right? So, maybe the very beginning, can we do an early April?
But we also, I imagine, will want to allow them time to do this. So, we could do April 23rd, get the submission in seven weeks, so.
That seems short.
No, actually, if you went ahead and quickly engaged counsel, they could, they could respond to this. It's not a lot of work to do for them to do drawings and to get up to speed. It's not a complicated site, right? So, it seems to me four weeks to actually do the work is enough, and I, if we put it off till the end of April, then there's no planting.
Okay, then, only other option in April is April 9th, which has 25 cases.
Oh, really, the end of April?
We don't have, April 23rd, we have 10. April 30th, we have nine.
April?
Only have three hearings in April.
With the middle one, April 10th?
No.
Sorry.
April 9th, April 23rd.
Okay, I have that April. And April 9th is?
Submission is March 20th.
Six weeks. Okay, let's do April 9th. That's a submission on March 20th. And actually, in consideration of this, we could give them another week, you know? We could say submission March 27th. And, but the submission has to be your architect slash engineer, whichever one you end up selecting, submitting by March 27th, the drawings that are completely responsive to everything that those, that that professional hears on the review sessions, which they listen to, review ed hearings, which they listen to, the videos, and, and your counsel putting together the package that's responsive, okay? And when we say responsive, because we haven't heard anything from the neighbors, I want to see a landscaping plan that's responsive to what our directions were at the last hearing. Not grass and not, vines fine, but not grass.
What's vine? Vines?
The vines crawling up the back of the building, fine, but not grass in that open area, because that invites dead grass and it invites storage, okay?
And maintenance.
Maintenance.
Maintenance, yeah, and the grass. But the neighbors said they would take care of it.
Right. They're not going to take care of it. The neighbors don't take care of grass. It's your grass, and it's going to die, and we don't want that, okay? We want it to be vegetation, all right?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, do you want to do the second call? She submitted the plans.
Sure.
Okay. Item number 615, second call, 2017, 258 BZ, 6161 Broadway, Bronx. Dr. Dua. Okay. Have a seat, have a seat, sir. Lisa, I'm sorry. Okay. You still under oath?
He's a very complicated guy.
Lisa Foladere from Eric Palatnik, P.C. So, this is item number 15, 2017, 258 BZ, 6161 Broadway, the Bronx. We were forwarded the revised plans.
Right, okay, so someone has seen that it was submitted?
Yes.
Okay. And there are the drawings of 21219? I'm just opening up. Here. Sorry, 16, 6161 Broadway, is that it?
Yes. 258 BZ, 2017, 258 BZ.
Okay, revised plans dated February 12, 2019.
Okay. All right, are we good? All right, so then I'd like to make a motion to close. Chair promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashabeta?
Aye.
And a motion for further? Chair promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Chair, Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashabeta?
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Chair, the tenants from the earlier case, they just arrived, Dr. Dua and.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we're going to call them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, we're going to go back to item number 11, 2016, 1208 BZ, 300 East 64th Street, Manhattan. We're going to take testimony from the neighbors, the tenants of the building. You'll have three minutes each. Please come to the podium and state your name for the record, and you can come and sign them later.
Hi there, my name's Jennifer Robbins. I'm here because we have a Barry's Bootcamp directly below us, as you heard earlier this morning. My concern is that.
Sorry, where do you live relative to this?
Oh, I live on 300 East 64th Street, which is directly above Barry's. So, first, it's the lobby, then it's Barry's Bootcamp, and then I'm the first floor right above them.
So, you're, what floor are you on?
Well, it's called the fifth floor, but technically, it's the first tenant floor.
And right under you is Barry's Bootcamp.
Exactly, correct. So, we were here initially in December, and they had a six-week warning to decrease the sound levels, and they said they were going to get new flooring installed. But what we've actually experienced in the last few weeks since then is that their noises have actually increased. So, their microphone levels, I can hear, you know, I can hear the countdowns of all their instructors coming up through every floor in my apartment. I can hear the music, the bass, my walls shake. One of the worst things is the weight dropping. So, they have, you know, 30 people in a class that lifts dumbbells up, and then they all drop them on the floor for hours, which is, it sounds like thunder. I mean, it sounds like a construction site, basically, below.
And what time does this start, and what time is it worst?
It starts at 6:00 a.m. I'd say it's worse around, the strongest is about 9:00 a.m. I think that's when they have heavier classes, and also around 6:00 p.m.
And in the last, in the very recent future, have, have you continued to hear these loud weight drops?
Yes.
And do you have any way of knowing whether or not this is happening on the floor directly below you, or is it happening on another floor?
I believe it is directly the floor below me.
And have you seen any? I'm going to stop here.
Okay.
You guys, if anyone else has questions?
Oh, you didn't have?
Our doormen also are right below, and they are constantly bothered by it coming from above them.
So, the doormen are also aware, so they're on the first floor, right?
Yes.
And they're aware?
Correct.
Okay, so you?
And many other tenants on our floor. Unfortunately, one tenant on our floor is a Barry's Bootcamp instructor at that same location, so he has a bit of a hesitance to complain too much. Yeah.
Okay, so they said that they lowered the sound system levels. That's not been your recent experience?
It has not. They said they were going to lower the sound levels between December 22nd, I believe, and January 18th, which was their six-week deadline that the court had provided. And in fact, I had noticed it was louder since then.
No, it's not. Okay, so since then, you noticed it was, sorry, I missed that last.
It's, it's increased, and I think it's a behavioral thing of not really caring. And we call often asking.
You call, you've made several complaints recently?
I have. I've called about, I think, four times in the last four weeks.
And who is it that you've called? Barry's Bootcamp?
Yes, I called Barry's Bootcamp, and I've talked to their manager and requested to please at least just turn the mic down, and.
Who's their manager?
I don't know the name.
Do you have any emails or any communication besides phone calls?
I do. I do.
Can you, can you, would you be able to submit that to us?
Of course.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, you have to sign over here. Print your name, please, for the record.
Do you have more questions?
Doctor?
No, I know.
Please.
Hi, I'm Doctor Dua, I, um, Prachi Dua. I was here...
Sorry, I can't, say again.
I may have another question for, uh...
One more question, sorry.
Can you step back to the record?
Was there an agreement between you and the, um, and the manager about taking some time off during the holiday?
Uh, that was Prachi.
Okay, thank you.
And could you spell your name, please?
Yeah, P-R-A-C-H-I is the first name, and last name is Dua, D-U-A. Um, so I came, I came for the first, uh, hearing, and, um, you know, for like the first, like, first couple of days, like, well, they did lower, they did lower the music, but then we're back to baseline now.
First couple of days of the holidays, you mean?
No, first couple of days after the hearing.
Oh, after the hearing, okay.
You know, because I was, I was being very, like, practical, and I said that we'll wait for the floors to be installed so that we can, like, then we'll see, like, how the dumbbells are, because I, I'm trying to work with them to the best of my capability. Um, but then, like, after, like, now, now it's back to what, like, Jennifer said, like, where we can hear the instructors through, through the walls, like, in our bathroom, in our living room, um, and we, I could still hear the subwoofer, like, waking me up in the mornings. Um, so it's, it's just kind of shocking that, like, after we all, after we came here to make an agreement to at least lower the music, that's something that they can control, right? The dumbbells, I know until the floor is installed can't be, like, controlled, and I'm very reasonable about that, but at least you can have control, behavioral control over, like, your speaker system. That's something that can be adjusted. So basically, they didn't do that. So I made a request that on New Year's Day, at least, if they could just cancel the first morning, morning class, because I was like, everyone's off that day, and I don't want to, uh, be up. So he, he agreed to just, like, cancel that one class, but he couldn't cancel the nine o'clock, just like the 7:45, so I was like, okay, that, at least that will give me one more hour on New Year's Day. Um, and so then after that, what's even more concerning is that, like, I, I emailed the condominium, like, manager board stating that, like, none of, none of the complaints, like, the complaints are still, like, on, like, ongoing, that we could still hear the sound. We also arranged a meeting with him. All I had requested is that, like, can we, I requested that the hearing notice be placed on our first floor in the lobby, and I, I'd messaged, um, I'd messaged my, I'd emailed myself to get the copy of the hearing notice, and I forwarded it to them. They did not, they didn't put it in the lobby. It, it was still, it still wasn't there when I came back, uh, yesterday. Um, and I requested that, like, a letter be sent out to all the fifth and sixth floor tenants to figure out, like, which apartments are being affected, to figure out, like, you know, like, how we could solve the problem, because if, if, like, if it's affecting all, he, he himself, then he arranged a meeting just with us and the manager himself, and he was like, actually, everyone on, every apartment on the fifth floor has been complaining about this. And specifically, my apartment, before I bought it last year, that, uh, that landlord, who was like 90 years old, did complain about the noise issue, and they didn't tell me at the time of buying and selling that there was this ongoing complaint. Um, and she was 90 years old, so she couldn't fight it. Like, I mean, you know, there's, it's really hard for her to even make the phone calls, so, you know, I just, I just let it go. But I said, like, now we should, like, try to figure out a solution. Um, so, like, I've been trying my best, like, I've been asking them, can we arrange a meeting with the fifth and sixth floor owners to figure out, like, where the problem is? I've been trying to meet with our elected, because it's a condominium, like, with our elected, like, board members. For the last five months, I've been trying to arrange a meeting. I haven't, I've yet to meet with them, I've yet to hear from them, like, I've yet to get feedback. I even requested that, like, we pay, like, a thousand, they've increased the maintenance charges to a thousand plus per month. I've been requesting that maybe they could sponsor, like, sound testing to, like, help us figure out, like, what the problem is, troubleshoot it.
Which, the condos, who sponsors the sound testing?
Like, just like the condominium, like, board management, or the cosponsor, or the sponsors of the gym, like, just, to just help us out. And I said that you can, you guys are more than welcome to come at 5:30 in my apartment, like, I'm out anyways, you can just do, like, the, you guys can do the sound testing. Like, I'm trying to work as much as I can with them, and I feel like I'm just hitting, like, a, like, a roadblock. I don't know what, what else to do besides coming here and, like...
Okay, well, we really appreciate you coming here. I don't think any of the representatives from the owner or any, or here anymore, we will direct them to listen to the video.
I just, I emailed Frank Steinjock.
Yeah, but I think even maybe more than that, I, I would like to send a, have us send a letter to the owner of the gym and to counsel, directing them to lower the sound levels immediately. Um, and that our compliance officer will, will check up, maybe we can have some kind of communication between tenants and our compliance officer to find out whether the sound levels have been lowered, because we can haul them right back in, uh, kind of on an emergency, if necessary. This is a, an initial, this is a legalization, and it's not even a, it's not even a continuation, right, a renewal. So this is a first. We could decide not to grant them the special permit, and we could do it quickly, right? So I think a letter, which we'll talk about among staff, should go out immediately to the owner, um, directing them that we've heard that they are not doing what they represented they were doing. Um, so let's say, let's see, uh...
I just want to ask, Ms. Robbins, if you come back, is, um, the gentleman that came together with Mr. Frank Steinjock, is Matthew Schwartz?
Matthew Schwartz.
Is that the, the person you're dealing with?
And that was the person that you spoke to?
Yeah, I met him actually on the first day of the hearing, and I only, like, exchanged, like, a couple of, um, messages, like, the first three or four days after the initial hearing, because he was trying to ask me whether or not the sound was, like, lowered, and like, what I felt about it, and I said, yeah, we're, we're on the right, like, we're on the right track. You know, at the end, like, I, I kept on emphasizing even to, like, our condo manager, owner, like, I'm not here, I'm like, from the, I work in the Upper East Side, my practice is there. My goal is not to shut down, like, Barry's, because, you know, I know how important it is to the community, even as a physician, from, like, the health perspective, but at the same time, like, I live there, too, you know? And I'm, like, trying my best at every level to not let this happen, but I don't know what else to do.
Okay. All right, okay, thank you very much. I really appreciate you coming. We know it's difficult to get here, things are work scheduled.
Are they aware of the adjourn date?
What'd you say?
Are they aware of the adjourn date?
Um, March 26th.
It's the next hearing.
It's the next hearing at 10 o'clock.
At 10 o'clock.
I had emailed her.
A letter would be wonderful, thank you. Okay, and so, and if it turns out we, um, because our, so Ted Ricketts is our compliance officer, he'll get in touch with you. If you could please leave your email addresses?
I have the doctor's email address and telephone number.
Okay, so, um, and then send to, send us sort of regular reports after we send out this letter. Um, send us regular reports if there's any change, and if it's, if there's still complaints, right? And then we can follow up with that, okay? So it might be that we're calling an earlier compliance hearing before March 26th, if it turns out that it's really not changed at all. It's a month, and it's really six weeks of potential not sleeping in the morning.
So your contact would be great, if you could, if you could, uh, if you could come to the next hearing, uh, I'm not sure what your schedules are, but it's really great to have, uh, some insight as to what is really going on from a tenant's perspective.
We could make a note also on our March 26 calendar to make this an earlier hearing time, because this is...
Well, it'll be 10 o'clock.
No, 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 in other words, don't put it as number 11 on the calendar, put it as number one or two, depends if the DOB is here, but put it as number one or two on the calendar, that way...
Let's see, it's March 26th, a here, an A case?
Because that, that way we would know it starts at 10, because, like, for instance, we're up to item number 11, and it's 1 o'clock.
And then I, I just had another question for you guys, um, like, how do we go about, like, is it okay if we legally, like, if we, if we send a letter to our neighbors to figure out, like, what they've been, and that's okay, right?
I mean, if your condo board isn't doing anything, what are you supposed to do?
You're allowed, and I hate to say this, but the First Amendment is, uh, so, it's permitted, despite the...
Something that I just want to bring to your attention, at the hearing, we were told that, um, they will be discussing the, uh, the operation of the gym with the sound engineers and with the tenants and with the management, so just want you guys to be aware of it and make sure they know that you know, and you want to be involved in it before the next round of sound testing happens.
Yeah, because I also told them that, like, there's, I kept on telling them that, like, how the sound testing wasn't done at a proper time, like, between...
We have asked them to do it in the morning.
Okay, thank you.
Final question for me. Have you guys ever seen the operation at, at the boot camp? Have you entered in, and, and have you seen them work out with weights?
Yeah, I've been to their class. Um, so basically, the way that the class works is that it's, uh, so you alternate sides, so it's like 15 minutes you're on the treadmill, 15 minutes you're dropping, like, you're working out with the weights, um, so...
And when you say, I heard you say dropping, uh, have you seen them drop weights?
Oh, yeah, of course.
From what height?
Um, so there's like a...
From overhead?
No, no, like, you basically have the, like, the bench, right, and you're basically, like, lifting, like, the weights, and then just, like, I know...
You're lying on stomach or on your back?
You could be, you could be sitting down.
You could be sitting down?
Lying down, yeah.
Are you also, like, lying on your stomach, and you're doing the weight like this, and you might drop them from, from your hand, if water...
Yeah, like, you know, like, some people might, like, I guess, like, it depends, like, I don't personally drop the weights, like, you could, like, just put it on the floor, but I think collectively, when there's, like, so many people in the class, like, especially...
I'm, I'm only asking from what you observed. Did you observe people dropping weights from, say, sitting down shoulder height?
Yeah.
From shoulder height, sitting down?
I wouldn't say shoulder height, but like, at least...
You have observed?
You have to come to the microphone.
Sorry, I've observed from shoulder height.
Is that sitting on a bench or standing up?
It's standing up. And I've also read, unfortunately, it's, it's kind of a cultural, um, part of their workouts. I've read, you know, articles from their CEO about the weight dropping and how it's like a, you know, it's a lifestyle, in a sense.
Can you share that with us?
Can you please, yeah, if you can also submit that, that'd be great.
Yeah, I will.
And how many people, you, I just wanted, last thing about the, the worst time you said is around 7 o'clock, or 9 o'clock, and, 9 o'clock, what you said.
I said 9 o'clock, but I think Prachi's awake earlier than I am, so maybe, uh...
Like, I, for me personally, I mean, I leave by, like, 8:30 to go to work, so, like, I could hear it, I could hear it in the morning, like, starting from, like, 6:00. Um, when I was, when I had, like, a couple, when I had, like, a couple of months off last year, and I was, like, in the apartment all the time, the quiet times were when there were basically, like, no classes, and in the afternoon time, um, and a little, like, around 11 o'clock, it would, it would slow down a little bit. Uh, but now we're in opposite roles, and, like, she's, she's more, she spends more time in the apartment during the day, so, yeah.
Nine, nine for me is the heaviest, and then around 6:00 PM. I think that's when their class is the largest.
And 6:00 PM till when?
Until the last class.
Until the last class, I think.
Okay.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
And you can also watch the tape of what happened this morning. Um, just, I had emailed the applicant to say that they were here making a presentation. Um, the applicant, Frank Steinjock, has said, I've received, I have contacted Barry's and have asked that the sound system be adjusted immediately. I don't know.
And it should be a permanent...
Right, no, 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 but we're going to send a formal letter.
No, I know.
It's going to be a little casual email, it's really, this is a demand, not a casual email that says, you know, pretty please.
Okay.
Okay. Item number 20, 2017, 313 BZ, 853 Kent Avenue, Brooklyn. Raise your right hand. Are you the only one testifying? Are you coming? No, nobody? Okay. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and you are testifying before the board, and we respond honestly to board member questions?
Yeah.
Thank you. Print your name? Yeah, the swear and change.
One comes to, oh, you have an extra, are you done?
Good afternoon. Moshe Freeman, Freeman PE, for the applicant. We, we had somebody attend the executive session yesterday, so if you don't mind, I'll just go through a couple of things. First of all, we're going to go through, yes, I made a mistake. On page 10, we changed all the five feet to three foot, six foot, apparently, on page 10, we missed one. However, page seven and the facade and 11 do comply, and in order to show that it is, we changed page 11 in order to show what, exactly what's going on by giving little cuts of the rear of the building and the front of the building. What you're seeing is not balconies, but those are gates, which are against the wall. So therefore...
I call them Juliet balconies.
Well, they're not even Juliet. In the front, we have, there's no step out, right? These are just safety gates, because they have big windows coming down to the floor, and we have to protect the people, so therefore, when you're looking at the rear facade, it looks, you would think they're all balconies. We tried on the plans to say, it says railing, railing in two different places. According to zoning code, you can't have a balcony lower than the third floor, so therefore, those are all just gates. And so the plans actually are correct, but we will put this picture, this plan into the record in order to, so that everybody could see it clearly.
Right, I see. Actually, you know, your drawing that you have on page 11, um, where there's that sort of part plan on the left side, the railing itself, because it comes out, looks like it's coming out on, like, a little Juliet balcony, as opposed, it's like flying in the air, right?
Right.
And actually, if you really go with it like that, I don't think that's allowed, because that's, uh, one foot is bigger than a baby's head. I think it needs to be four inches away from the building in order to qualify as protection.
You're talking in the front?
Yeah, so this one here.
Right.
Unless that's that grade, it's not a grade.
No, no, it's not.
So you're above grade, so I, the railing has to be closer to the building, not a foot away from the building, but four inches from the building, otherwise the little kid could fall through it, right? That's, one foot's plenty of room.
You can go up to 22, that's the Juliet, that is coming out.
Oh, there's an actual balcony?
Well, you're allowed to go 22 inches above.
No, no, that's what I...
Yes.
There's only two, there's two lines that seem to indicate railing.
No, 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 that is...
There's another line that indicates balcony.
Yeah, that's a step-out balcony.
Yeah, okay, so that's not, that's not clear.
That's about 22 inches.
So it's indicating a one-foot-deep step-out Juliet balcony?
That, which is permitted.
Okay.
Okay, but we're talking about in the, I think the confusion was in the rear, and because it just looks like balcony, 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 and not, that's not what we're doing.
Especially that now you've indicated the eight foot, three inches is actually a Juliet.
Yeah, we put on, we added the dimension. It was correct, it just, it's clearer now. Okay, and the other thing that was, the financial analysis, first of all, I want to say I'm sorry, Barbara couldn't make it. She spent the night in the hospital with her mother, who fell down, so I hope everything's okay, but I have to remind the board what happened the last hearing. This is an owner-occupied two-family. The comps are not really what we're looking for, we're looking that the, the as-of-right is not, because this is a two-family. This is what the board told us at the last hearing, that what we have to worry about is that the as-of-right scenario doesn't work. That's what, because usually on a two-family, especially it's owner-occupied, we don't need a full financial analysis. You can listen, we, we went back to listen again to the last hearing. Uh, what we can do to make this a little bit more plain to the board is I will get the two affidavits from the two partners, Mr. Goldstein and, and Mr. Freed, stating that they are, it's going to occupy the building.
Okay, but so it still goes, so my question is still, how do we determine what the minimum variance is necessary, like, that you're going to 2.4 FAR, um, where we have example of two FAR, like, how do we, in another case, right, and how do, and plus, we have these two zoning districts adjacent, like, why wouldn't we go with the lower-density zoning district instead of this one? In the lower-density district, plenty of people have two-family houses, it's an allowed use, right? So I'm still struggling with why the greater FAR should be required if in the R6, whatever it is...
R6A.
P, R6B, it's a two-FAR.
So we took the compromise when we started this, and we had the pre-application here. We said we would take the compromise between the.
No, no, we can't, we can't go, we're going, we're talking about it here, right?
Okay.
So my question is, why not be a two-FAR building if in a joint, a nearby, like the proximity is equidistant, right? In the near proximity, we have R6B mid-block districts that are two, and we know that a two-family house works there because that's allowed in R6B, right? So it seems like the request for me is, it's more than necessary to afford relief. That's the goal. So I would recommend, just because I can't think of a reason why otherwise, that if we go to two-FAR, that brings the building down a little bit and, and then addresses any kind of concerns we might have with this issue of financials to the extent that it's considered.
Or we can go with the comps and update the comps.
No, no. So again. Right, but if you were to update the comps, you're definitely going to have to shrink this building. Because I'm looking at, first of all, you have no photos of those comps at all, so I have no idea what those comps look like. But I do know that you've made an argument that this is brand-new, top-quality construction, which is why you included the FFNE, right? So if I'm just looking at Halsted and Element, two-bedroom apartments are going for $1,000 a square foot in that area. Your somewhere is at 500 a square foot and change, and you have a four-bedroom, three-bathrooms. So if you were to find comps that are even two-bedrooms in new construction, that would double what you're getting, which means that you can't support asking for 2.4. So I think in order to just move this case along and like get on with life, I think the most direct is to reduce the building to 2.4. It addresses all the concerns that you've already addressed.
I'm sorry.
To two, yeah, yeah, to two.
But being getting rid of a whole, most probably end up getting rid of a whole bedroom. I, I, we need the.
No, 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 but let's just say, I don't see it justified in, in any of the materials that are submitted. And again, everybody else in the R6B has two-family home opportunity and seems to manage with two-FAR. And we had another case where the variance was 1.9, for whatever reason, it was 1.9. So it just seems like, you know, arguably, it would be different if you were surrounded by R72s or something like that. But you're not. You're adjacent to R6B district. So why should you be put in a better position than they are, right, than all of the other sites? And the site itself, 25 by 120, gets more floor area than most people because they're using two, because you have an extra 20 feet to measure against, right? So you're actually advantaged by our waiver over everybody else who has residential in an R6B. That's, that's not, that's not what a variance is for, right? Okay. So I think that's the clearest direction. If you do that, we could be finished quickly with this instead of having to go back and forth. Okay. Are there any speakers on this? All right, so.
Now, we're going to need time to redesign this whole building. It's not just taking off a little bit.
Well, you have a lot, you also have a lot of rear yard to play with. We're not regulating the rear yard, right? You have a much deeper rear yard than.
Well.
Well, in other words, you could fit bathrooms, kitchens, all that in the middle, your staircase in the middle, et cetera, right?
Right.
Okay. Can we do April 23rd?
Yeah.
So next hearing, April 23rd, submission date.
Oh.
Oh, no.
Oh, no, no, that's a holiday.
Yes.
Speakers again.
I did, I think I asked for speakers already.
Yeah. How about April 30th?
April 30th, does that work? Or what's the submission date?
Submission is April 10.
April 10 submission, does that work?
No. May 7th. April 17th.
May 7th, April 17 submission?
April 17 submission.
20th is possible.
Anyway, we're waiting for DEP.
So which, which one?
Well, wait, no, no, April 17th, right, no, no, I'm just saying. DEP should be, it's only noise, so it's not a problem.
Yeah, and that was promised in March.
So that's a, that's a hearing on May 7th for submission, April 7th.
But you could submit whenever you want.
I'm going to submit as soon as I get it together.
Yeah, okay.
What's hearing date again? May?
May 7th. April 17th.
Okay, I'll, I'll be honest with you. I'm going to try as much as possible to do. I may be a little bit over two, but I, in order to get the program, but I hope the board will take that into account that we're.
I don't know. Let's just put it this way. We're giving you the direction to do two, okay? You can't tell, because you didn't do the work yet, that you can't do two.
Correct. I'm not saying that.
Someone else did 1.9, so it must be possible to do two.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Did you go?
Uh, yeah.
Item number 21, 2851 BZ, 11-01, Plainview Avenue, Queens. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions? Your neighbors, you don't have to be sworn in.
Did you answer? Sorry.
Yeah, she did.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, she did.
Didn't hear it.
Please state your name for the record.
Elise Fullader from Eric Palatnick PC. I had a conversation with the architect about the ridge height, and he said that it couldn't be modified because there'd be no headroom in the attic. And they played with that on A002, and that was part of when we showed the lesser variance. And as you all observed yesterday, the, the building was created in a really efficient way. It was, and it's just on such a small property, they worked with a lot of different ways, and this was the most efficient.
But you weren't able to get the architect to come to.
I mean, he, his schedule's really busy, and he said he, if, since this was the only comment, it was really hard for him to attend.
Since it's the only comment.
I mean, your other comment is about the 30, the neighbors next door. And next door, there is 30 feet in zoning height on either side, so it's about 37, as you said. And we provided a 35-foot zoning height when we're permitted to have a 40-feet legally.
No, I know, but the question is, what about the neighbor, what about the actual heights of the neighbors?
So it's, as you observed, it's the 30 feet plus the base flood elevation, so we're about five feet.
That's not my question.
Yeah.
Heights of the neighbors.
We looked up on the CVO, they had 30 feet.
But that's measured from base, that's measured from plane.
Yes.
That's base plane, not from base flood. So you're automatically seven feet or something feet higher, seven feet, I want to say.
We observed that they, after speaking with the architect, that they all have, they are all raised. They have.
Garage level.
Garage level, yeah.
No, 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 but they are effectively three-story buildings.
Yes.
So three-story buildings, if you exaggerate it, 10 feet forward floor makes them 30 feet high, right?
Yeah.
But even if they're 35 feet high because they have a roof.
Mm-hmm.
You're measuring that from grade, three floors from grade, 35 feet measured from grade. You're measuring from base flood elevation, which is, at the very least, we're measuring four feet above grade, right? So it means you're something like four feet or five feet higher.
Yeah, we are.
Than everybody else.
We are about five feet higher.
Okay. So that's why I was asking.
Yeah.
If there was a way to bring the roof, the attic height down.
Yeah, and they, in order to get the amount of rooms and a viable 1,600-square-foot livable home, like, it's already a very, very small home. We, there was no way. They tried to play with the roofs when we first gave you, gave you this application at the notice of comments. We tried because we had to answer a lesser variance question, and this was the most efficient way to provide the possible roof. So.
So I, I, I need to note, because we just got that submission, yesterday, one of the neighbors came to the review session.
Yeah.
And handed into us, I think it was 13, 13 letters, but the letters are all the same comment, but each one signed by somebody else. I, I say that because sometimes we get individual comments and the letters in support are also.
Yeah.
And a form letter that lots of people sign.
And we did that because, as I stated at the last hearing, at the community board meeting, at the land use meeting, they requested that we go to each of the neighbors and tell them about the property, or as many as possible, because they didn't want to vote on it until they felt comfortable that the neighborhood had been thoroughly vetted through this application and felt good about it.
But it wasn't so thorough because you didn't get the.
Well, there's always, there's always people on both sides of everything. So we did go through people, but different people, and people change their minds about how they feel about it.
So let's see if there are any neighbors here today. Are there any neighbors here to speak on this application? Please come.
Please come forward. You can sign in later, but state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes.
My name is Saul Kapelowitz. Do I just start?
Start.
Can you spell your last name, please?
It's K O P E L O W I T Z. The letter written was from David Kapelowitz. He's my father. So I live at 1109 Plainview Avenue. I've been there for about four years. I lived in the local community for about 17 years. I've really seen the community develop and flourish, and it's really been positive. And, you know, people are, the community's growing, and it's a nice thing, and we're all, we're all for that. My concerns were a number of different things. I did listen. Thank you for clarifying on the executive session yesterday. A few of my concerns. First of all, under 7221B, the financial feasibility study, I understand that what, that wasn't required under single-family. I just, I wasn't 100% sure, like if that's.
Sure, yeah.
It's, okay. So that's not, that doesn't apply in this case because, like, no, okay.
So you're an immediate neighbor. You live right next door.
Yeah, I'm right next door.
Okay.
Okay. First point. The second, the second point was 7221E, the minimum variance. Going through the plans that I received from the last hearing, there are a total of six variances. Minimum lot size, lot width, front side yard, setbacks, exposure, plain, nothing the board doesn't know. It, it seems a little bit excessive. I understand it is a tiny lot. It's very small. The house proposed is also very small. But at the end of the day, it's, it's 25 by 47, 28 by 47. It, it is a really small lot, so a small house kind of makes sense for a small, small lot. But that being said, you know, the house is four bedrooms, four bathrooms with parking garage. It just, to me, it doesn't seem like this is the minimum variance. I mean, I, I think there could be a little bit less to be, to be granted over here. I mean, you know, there's also considerations of my own, you know, loss of light and air because the building's going to be four stories, as was mentioned yesterday. I would lose my light and air, and because it's going to be so big and so close to my own property, it's probably going to devalue my own property. But that's basically my own issues with, with the proposed application. The objection letters that I gathered over the past couple of weeks, I really didn't have a lot of time because I, I only knew about it in late December, and we only went to the, we only heard the hearing in January. My objection, the objection letters that I gathered from the neighbors that I brought in, I apologize that they were submitted yesterday, a little bit unorthodox when I got them in. They were all from immediate neighbors, talking about within like 300 feet of the subject lot. The letters of support, while I'm not, I'm not here to discredit the applicant or anybody else who provided those letters, but those letters came from, I mean, people as far as a mile away from the property. I, I don't know that they would really have any understanding of the immediate area. These neighbors that I went to, most of them were never approached. And there are actually two form letters. One was for people who received a set of plans, and one was for people who did not. The people who I spoke to, for the most part, did not receive letters or a set of plans or any of that. So, you know, the, the neighborhood objection to the, the character proposed house was really from the, the close, the close neighbors, the ones who will be immediately elected. Should I continue or?
All right.
I don't know if I'm out of time. I don't.
No, I mean, I, I wanted you to be able to just.
Sure.
State fully what your concerns were, so then we can address them amongst ourselves.
Absolutely. My last two points were, I, I would request, because this seems really out of character with the neighborhood, I would request, if possible, that the board do a site visit just to see.
The board has done a site visit.
They have done a site.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay. I didn't, yeah, I really didn't know.
That's standard procedure, the board, the commissioners to visit the site.
And it was that, okay. The last, the last item, I think, would be to get a set of plans and really to go over it with my neighborhood, with my neighbors, with everybody who signed the letters of objection. There are additional people who are objecting to this, but they wanted to write their own letter. They wanted to more thoroughly go into it, but they unfortunately couldn't meet it in time for the deadline.
So you didn't, I thought you, how did you know about all of this if you didn't review the plans? I thought you reviewed the plans.
I reviewed the plans, but I didn't, I didn't have time to get to all my neighbors, to make copies of the plans, give it to them, go through the application and show them. I was able to speak to a bunch of them, and 13 of them were very happy to sign the letter. We have a few more who are interested, but they didn't, you know, conflicts of schedule, you know, we all work and.
Okay. All right. We'll, we'll talk about what it says after. Thank you very much. Are there other speakers? Anybody else who wants to speak? No? You don't want to speak? Okay.
I'd also like to say that we were contacted last week by, I think it was a city council person or some type of official, and we sent them, and they said people were coming to them with questions. So we sent them a copy of the plans, and we authorized them to give it to whoever wanted them. And they were the most up-to-date ones that were changed as we discussed the side yards last time, and.
Okay. All right. So, thank you. So I just, again, kind of want to reiterate, the site is an extremely small site. An as-of-right house, if you could even build one, is more like a tool shed than it is a house. The kinds of waivers, that the only way that you can construct this house is to waive the yards, otherwise there's, you don't have a house, right? So it requires waivers of front yard, side yards in order to have a house. And then, because the house must be, and so this is something the neighbors really have to understand, they're located in a flood zone. All houses going forward need to be lifted, depending on where your grade level is. This, in this particular site, grade level, I think, is four feet lower than the flood elevation. So it means you, you have to have your, what's called freeboard, located above, above the base flood elevation, which puts your first floor a foot above that, right? And then, because all of these houses are required to have parking, and of course, everybody wants to have parking, you can't park, you can't drive your car underneath this four-foot thing, and there's no place on this site to put the parking outside. So you must lift the house up seven feet in order to be able to get a parking space inside the house, underneath the house, right? So automatically, it lifts the first floor up, and that's not really a usable floor. You're not permitted to use that floor except for parking, right? So it, it forces the house, all the other houses in the neighborhood have their ground floor, both parking and some bit of usable because they predate these flood regulations.
Lot of the lots.
Say, say again?
Lot of the houses around them ended up, when we went through the history, combined two lots together to make one.
Right. Well, so many of these houses are semi-detached houses, right?
What are you looking at?
Yeah, and so, and many, many of the houses in the neighborhood are two-family homes.
Three, actually.
Or, or three families. So this is a one-family home, so in terms of the density, lower than many of the houses in the neighborhood. And then the other part of it is that, that in this neighborhood, a two-bedroom house probably isn't standard, right? And, and to be able to use your attic to put in another bedroom or some occupiable space is a standard way of using an attic. So you need to have a minimum head clearance. And the architect actually gave us a drawing that showed what would happen if the roof line was altered. And so there were two options. Oh, it was almost like option A and option B. So option A, which showed the roof line more extreme, showed that you wouldn't be able to stand in a large part of the bedroom. There'd be like an area of about five feet where you could stand, whereas opposed to the roof line that was being proposed, there was a bigger area in the bedroom that you could stand, but it's still not the whole bedroom. So there's a part where eventually you hit your head in the bedroom. It's a kind of a classic attic bedroom. So I, I just don't see how you grant relief on such a tiny site without allowing for the setbacks that are requested, including the height. And then the other thing I do want to point out is the distance, as we talked about yesterday, the distance between the proposed building and the adjacent buildings is greater than what's required by zoning in terms of distance between buildings, because we have both yard requirements and distance between buildings requirements on adjacent lots, and it's greater than what's required for that minimum distance because of the where that adjacent house is located. And then, when I just go to Google Satellite, we always give Google a little bit of promotion on these hearings because nobody else is giving us satellites. I don't mean to promote Google. The house on the opposite side of the neighbor has, already has a narrow, a much shallower side yard than what's proposed. I'm just kind of looking at it and trying to guesstimate, but it looks like it's maybe a 10-foot distance between the existing building and the adjacent building, which is built on the property line, right? The adjacent building's built on the property line. So the distance might be 10 feet, and the distance that's proposed here, what did I say?
It's 15 plus four.
It's 19 foot, 5 inches. So it's almost 20 feet between the proposed house and the adjacent house. So actually, in a much better place than their neighbor on the other side. So I just have to say, I think it's, this is a really modest proposal, and I appreciate that the neighbors got used to having a vacant lot there for a very, very long time. But this is a piece of property that a property owner has the right to build a house on, and that's what a variance is for. Any other?
No, I agree with you. And as you pointed out, most of the buildings here are two families and three families. The immediately adjacent buildings on Plainview are three-family homes, and the ones on beach are two-family homes, according to.
Data sources.
Data sources. This is a one-family home. So, and, and I think they really have been, I think the applicant has tried to be as responsive to the neighborhood and set the building back where possible.
All right.
I don't think there's a better. I don't think there's a better solution.
And we're talking, bedroom number two is under 10 by 10. It's basically your most basic bedroom, right? Hard to furnish, try furnishing a 10 by 10 bedroom. So, so yeah, so I, I would just like to say that I appreciate the neighbors' concerns. We've already had two hearings on this and heard from the neighbors and actually went back and looked again at the building after we heard the objections of the neighbors. And I just don't see another solution for a viable house on this lot. It's not, and it's not as if the owner came to us saying, I want to put a two-family in here and therefore give me floor area increase, which sometimes we see, right? This is the most basic variety of waivers, so. So I would like to make a motion to close then.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabata?
Aye.
And, and a motion to grant.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabata?
Aye.
This application's been granted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you to the neighbors for coming also.
Item number 22201852BZ, 159 Borum Street, Brooklyn. Me, how are you? No, she wanted to do them separately, right?
Yeah, separately.
Yeah. Oh, you have to be sworn in the, no? Raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the board to respond honestly to board member questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. Good afternoon, Chair Promoter, members of the board. So, you know, these cases are both related, but I think we'll start with 159 Borum.
And your name for the record.
Nora Martins from Akerman LLP, representing the applicant. So Chair, you had a question about the threshold issue of the income-restricted housing units and we will submit a more detailed breakdown explaining the as-of-right parking requirements at the time these buildings were built in 1980, which was 70% in the R6 zoning district compared to the 45% reduced parking requirement pursuant to former section 25 dash 25. So we'll make sure to submit a more detailed breakdown of that information. We've also relayed the comments on the drawings to the project architect. I believe they've already made the changes and we will submit those, which included fixing the distance between buildings dimension, adding a specific note.
Can you repeat what you just said?
Sure. We've relayed the comments on the drawings to the project architect and they've already made the requested changes, which included fixing the minor error on the distance between buildings, just dimension, adding a specific note about the rear yard equivalent to the dimension rather than on the side of the plan, and also reconciling the parking space counts. They both reflect the 67 spaces that are proposed at the site. With regard to the restrictive declaration requirement for the existing income-restricted housing units, I have a few points to make about that. One is that the, we did submit to the board a copy of a city council resolution and a letter from the owner. Again, the owner of the, in this case, unlike previous cases before the board for these parking reductions, the applicant and owner and developer of the new housing at the site is not the same owner as the existing income-restricted housing.
I'm in, actually. Depends on the case.
Right, I'm just saying, the last two of these 7343, 433 applications, it was not the same, which has presented difficulty in this particular application. We did, we do believe that the affordability of the existing buildings is insured. We presented the board with a copy of the city council's resolution, which approved a tax exemption. While the current tax exemption does not expire until 2022, the approval from the city council actually amended that prior tax exemption to extend the term to 2062. So it's not a, you know, to be applied for in the future, once the current tax exemption expires. It effectively amended the existing tax exemption to extend it for another 40 years. Condition of that tax exemption is that the income-restricted housing units remain subject to section eight HAP contract until otherwise the tax exemption, which is extremely valuable to the property, will lapse and no longer be able to avail themselves of that tax exemption. In connection with the tax exemption, which was originally granted in 1980, along with the project approval and disposition, the, a development agreement was entered into between the owner and the city. It's referred to as a regulatory agreement in the city council's resolution, but it's technically a development agreement in connection with the disposition, which also requires that housing remain affordable in accordance with FHA requirements on the site.
Was that submitted?
We will submit that as well. No, that was not submitted with the application. And the, we'll confirm, but our understanding from the housing finance attorney that worked with the other owner on all of these approvals is that that regulatory agreement, as it's referred to in the city council resolution, is effective until 2062, coterminous with the tax exemption.
Sorry. The tax exemption doesn't, isn't available for continuation until 2022. That's what it says in the city council resolution.
It's effective beginning upon expiration of the current one, but the actual, what the city council approved is an Article V tax exemption, an amendment to the previous tax exemption to extend the term of the tax exemption.
So they approved the right to do it?
No, they approved it. It's done.
So this is the part that I really understand. By approving the, by approving it, the owner could still opt in 2022 or 23 not to go ahead with the exemption. That's what it states in the owner's letter. The owner's letter says
Right, it's possible, yeah.
It's in my interest to continue, but that means it's also possible to not continue it. So it was granted the right to continue, but the actual continuation requires a signature of some other kind of a document in 2021 or 2022, whenever that's actually executed, right? The owner has to opt in, right? So the pro-
I think it's more that they have to opt out.
No, no, that doesn't really make sense. It says that, sorry.
No, no, it, it, I understand that the owner today sees it to be his benefit to remain in this because of the tax benefit. I, I think the board appreciates that and understands that, but that doesn't mean that tomorrow he may find it much more profitable to choose another course of action and not continue making it affordable, lose that tax benefit and act, and if he believes in his cost-benefit analysis, that it is more valuable to him to not have affordable housing.
Right, so, so, and so the other thing that I want to point out that we've talked about in other cases like this, is that the, the property owner, the current property owner, obviously is making money from the sale of either it's a ground lease, I'm not sure exactly how this is being done, but either as a ground lease or as a, as a sale of, of the fee and a subdivision of tax lots, is making money from selling this to this for-profit developer who's building market-rate housing. So in order for the deal to go ahead, they need us, right? Or maybe they don't, because on this site, actually, they could put the parking. We talked about this before, there's places to put this parking.
On 159 Borum Street, actually, there is nowhere to put the-
Well, but maybe in terms of the zoning lot, you know, you can say that it's within 600 feet of, or something like that. So arguably, there's, there's a place to put this parking, right? And I don't know, you have 50 feet between the buildings, why isn't there a place to put the parking?
I think, I mean, the findings of the special permit note that it would be an improved site plan and I don't know that
No, no.
Anyone who's been with existing owners would find that, exactly, but part of the point of the special permit is to avoid this type of situation where existing buildings have a situation where a new building is built and everything's as-of-right under zoning, but then they have an open parking field where they used to have open space. I think that is part of the purpose of the special permit.
I'm not saying it's a desire, but that's the only if you stayed with special permit. If you went as-of-right and as-of-right, you're allowed to fill up the center with parking until you hit that maximum threshold of open space covered with parking space. Whether or not you're, it's a desirable design solution is another thing, but really, this is one of the situations where there is room to do this on an as-of-right basis, right? In addition to which, the stackers make possibility of doing this on an as-of-right basis, et cetera, et cetera. So, to go back, the owner who provided that letter stands to gain a lot from the sale or-
Can I address that? Can I, I actually haven't.
Well, let me just finish what I was saying, please. So the, because the owner stands to gain and does stand to gain, or otherwise wouldn't do it, because that's just the way we are, right? Then, and the owner intends to continue, as stated in the letter, with this tax abatement and so on, tax exemption, then I just, I still don't understand why that owner wouldn't enter into a restrictive declaration if that was possible to finish this deal, to enable the deal to go forward.
Did you want to say something?
I was
I just
Yeah, yeah.
Just going to say that perhaps they get a condition that any other type of non-regulation of the existing units kind of stimulates the original parking requirement to have to be satisfied.
Well, we could do that. We could make the grant entirely conditioned on, and what we tried to do with these restrictive decks is, and so if it's conditioned, so then we could, I, I'm just trying to figure out if there's a way to have this developer be the one who is obligated, because it's a conditional approval that runs to the other site, right? And the, it's the, this is the other part that's quite confusing. The actual approval is to allow the other site not to have parking anymore, right?
Right, for the zone, it's all one zoning lot.
It's all one zoning lot, but you're telling us it's a different developer and therefore, you know, and all of that stuff.
That's just, that's a totally just technical issue and coming to who signs a doc.
So the, but the reality is, it's the current property owner who's asking for this. Because without getting it, that person can't develop the site. So it isn't really relevant to us who the developer is on the new buildings. What's relevant is the owner of the current site and that person is being obligated to perform in a certain way. So I, again, I kind of, I have to go back. If we were to condition, it's the same thing. The, we're conditioning that the current owner of this property to, to obey with the parking regulations should the current owner not provide the affordable housing, because this is running with the current owner's zoning requirements, not the future developer's zoning requirements, right?
Except that the future developer, upon seeing that the current owner isn't providing, isn't providing the income-restricted housing anymore, could sue them.
Yeah, but we don't really want to get into, yeah. Instead, we'd rather regulate this through a process. So I guess I want to reiterate, this, it's the current owner who needs to obligate to provide the parking in the event that there's no affordable income-restricted, in the event that the quantity of income-restricted units that we see today on the site are reduced. So I'm back to the same thing. Because we'll impose that condition on that owner, we might as well get a restrictive declaration for it.
If I may.
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify one point. So there is the city council tax exemption, which goes till 2062 and will lapse if they don't continue to provide section eight housing, correct? There is also a HAP contract on the site, which is good for 20 years and doesn't, it was in 2016, and so that doesn't expire till 2036. So the current owner is going to enter, is going to continue the tax exemption, because otherwise they're going to be providing section eight housing with no tax exemption, which makes absolutely no sense.
So what would the reason be to not create a restrictive deck? If it's going to happen anyway? He's going to do it anyway. There's, there's no harm, no foul.
Well, it's a completely different legal document and burden on the property.
It's already incredibly burdened. There's a HAPs contract, there's going to be a tax exemption. How much more burden can a person get?
Just, it, it's not a burden if it's their intention. A burden would-
It burdens any future transfer of the property, it burdens any future mortgage on the property, and that is the concern.
We're concerned with a future transfer, we're concerned with a change of mind on, and this, this benefit that's going to be received for purposes that aren't-
Well, if it's no longer income-restricted housing, then they'll have to provide the parking, so I don't see what's concerned.
Well, how? By a condition that we're imposing on this neighbor.
The condition can be on the certificate of occupancy.
Well, then what's wrong, if it's going to be on the certificate of occupancy-
And then DOB can, well, enforce that.
If it's on the C of O, and we know very well that often it doesn't get on the C of O, which is one reason we ask for restrictive declarations, and that's part of the problem, is the BSA has a lot of experience with its conditions not appearing on the C of O, because as soon as the C of O is amended, it drops off, that's the end. DOB has no idea, and by the way, DOB cannot tell whether, it has no mechanism for checking whether the units are income-restricted. DOB doesn't do that work. So the only way to do that is to have an enforceable document, which is a restrictive declaration, which, and again, each time you list something, you're adding another potential burden that's clouded on title in some way that will show up in a title report, the C of O says, and all of that stuff. So then I, again, I go back. So let's just make it easy. Provide us a restrictive declaration. That's easy. So, okay? And that's the way we've worked on all of these other projects. It's working and it's not induced, it's not more burdensome than is currently the case.
The issue is that the other owner will not agree to a restrictive deck, unlike the other cases where the applicant was the owner, they were prospectively applying for the special permit.
You should bring the owner here the next time, because in order for the deal to be completed, we need the owner.
Could I, could I please have the applicant speak? Because they have a relationship with the owner and they can tell you exactly what the situation was. And also, one thing I want to clarify is that this property has already been sold. The existing owner has no, really no interests in doing anything for this project. Like, they don't have any incentive. They have sold the property. The reason they did all of that, and Paul Woody from SLA will explain that to you, there were several other benefits that accrued from the initial sale of that property, and he can explain it to you, but they've already done everything to keep that property income-restricted. They sold this parcel and they have no further incentive.
Understood. So here's the thing, okay, I just want to talk about this a little bit. I have a lot of experience with, in my previous work, with needing to go back to the seller of development rights or access rights and all of that kind of stuff in order to make a deal happen that is beneficial to the developer of the new site, right? It's called going back and working out a new deal, right? It's done all the time. The seller is happy to reconsider a deal when, when it's of, let's say, financial or other kind of interest to them. So if this is the develop, the current developer's interest to not provide the required parking, because obviously the site was sold on, on sort of false pretenses, I want to say. If the, if the developer is thinking to occupy with a new building lots that have required parking on them, either the developer represented to the seller that that required parking would be provided in the new buildings, therefore totally in compliance with zoning, or somehow or other, nobody seemed to know that you couldn't occupy these vacant lots, these parking lots.
As you've mentioned, there are places the parking could be provided, so I think it's, I think we totally speculation to talk about what the terms of the-
So, but this is what's confusing. So the seller knew that required parking was going to be occupied by buildings.
Right, that was the intent, to apply for the special permit, correct?
So intent to apply for a special permit doesn't mean you get a special permit.
Make the project more efficient and work.
Yes, but it doesn't mean you get the special permit.
Correct, there's no guarantee.
Normally those are option contracts, so obviously there was something else. And anyway, so it's kind of not our problem that, that there's a, whatever needs to be worked out, but we need to know that the income-restricted units will remain such and the obligation is imposed on the seller, not on this developer. Because this developer doesn't have any control on the, over the parking of those other units. So we could have any kind of objection, condition we want, it's never going to happen. So it's not, we're not in a workable situation here and you need to make it work. And that's called lawyers doing what lawyers do.
Could I?
Okay.
Could you give my client a minute to speak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Please state your name for the record.
Yeah, I am Paul Woody from Slave Property Group. I, I work at the developer of the Johnson and Borum- I, I work at the developer of the Johnson and Borum projects. So, I just want to clarify that, you know, we have a good relationship with, we're actually leasing these sites from the owner of Carribee Gardens, the Section 8 housing surrounding our projects. And we have a good relationship with them, we have a good development agreement with them, and so there's no, there's no false pretenses, there's no feeling of that sort of thing in this transaction. But I actually just want to take a step back. So, we worked for a long time before we signed these ground leases with the owner of Carribee Gardens to come up with an agreement that the city council person, Antonio Reynoso, and the community board approved of, to allow us to develop these sites as, as the projects that you are now familiar with. Part of that negotiation and that agreement and those conversations that we had involved extending the HAP contract in Carribee Gardens to maintain affordability in those projects, as Nora has mentioned, and also to do a variety of capital improvements in Carribee Gardens for the tenants who live there. So, you know, that included re-landscaping the grounds, they have a lot of nice parks and playgrounds that have a lot of potential, so those are going to be renovated as part of this deal, there's a variety of things that are going to happen that benefit Carribee Gardens and the residents who live there as, as part of this project. So, I think, you know, that work that we did and the owner did with the residents of Carribee Garden and the broader community was reflected in this project even being able to happen, and it's also reflected in the approvals we got from the community board and a letter of support we got from the council person in support of this particular special permit application for the parking. And I think, you know, that reflects their support of this project, but it also reflects their feelings that, you know, this level of parking is not required in the community, and that there are, in fact, even, you know, having a little bit less parking in these projects sort of encourages other modes of transportation, which, you know, I think everybody, you know, can support. So, I think, so that's just sort of like a little bit of the background about the project and the work we do with the community and Carribee Gardens and the benefits they're gonna get from this project. And, you know, and I'll just speak, there's a general conversation to be had around the parking that's, you know, actually going to be used in this, in these projects, which, you know, based on our experience as landlord and owner in this neighborhood, we have a building, a 20-unit building that's a couple blocks away-
Sorry.
-and a 50-unit building that's off the Lorimer stop on the L train. The 20-unit building has one parking spot leased, the 50-unit building has four parking spaces leased. I think in these new projects, there's just not that much demand for parking. That's, that's our experience, and we also brought our broker here, who does a lot of projects in the neighborhood, who can also speak to that, but they're just, you know, the parking studies are done off of, you know, census data, and that's, you know, as good a metric as we have, but we're just, our perspective as an owner of these sorts of new construction buildings, people are just, they don't want parking spaces in these buildings, people don't drive cars, there, there's a lot of other options for transportation in the, in sort of, you know, there's the L train, there's the, there's other trains, buses, like bikes, lots of other ways to get around. And I think that that's reflected in the people who are renting the building. So, then the, the last point is about, sort of, again, the restrictive deck. I mean, unfortunately, we've reached out to our, you know, our, basically our partner in this deal, there's no, you know, again, we have a very good relationship with him. He's, there's just no, there's no restrictive deck that can be signed in this case.
Because?
Well, so, you know, the HAP contract goes through 2036, right?
No, answer that question. Because?
Well, I, this is part of my answer. So, there's a HAP contract that goes through 2036, so there's an obligation, he's absolutely obligated to provide affordable housing through that date, right? So, through that date, no restrictive deck is necessary, because that housing is remaining affordable per the HAP contract through 2036, okay? So, really, what we're talking about is after 2036, right? Okay, so after 2036, I think the, the way that this housing is able to be affordable is through two, two parts, right? The, the tax exemption, which we've talked about, but also, you know, the, the HAP contract, right, that comes from the federal government. And I think in all likelihood, you know, HUD will renew their HAP contract in 2036, but nobody knows what the world is gonna look like in 20 years. And, and so, I think, like, his feeling is, it would be irresponsible for me, as an owner, to commit myself to something where I do not know if it, if it's actually possible, if the programs that allow me to do this are not going to be in place in 20 years, right? And that's, that's on the federal level, the state level, the city level, and this, none of these, none of these agencies are gonna commit 20 years in advance to providing any sort of subsidy to, to allow these projects to be. But again, I think this is all very unlikely, because as he stated in his letter, in all likelihood, you know, these projects are gonna remain affordable, because they have this, the tax exemption, and there's an incentive for him to keep the HAP.
Right, but the, I was gonna say, the restrictive deck doesn't say that he has to forever be affordable. It says that should he not be, he has to provide the required parking, as if it was never affordable. So, it, it gives him the opt-out. If in 20 years, that contract is not renewed, and he decides, oh, this is the perfect place for market-rate housing, he just has to put the required parking on the, on the site somewhere.
Right, I mean, I think, unfortunately, like, we talked a little bit about this before, but, so, right. I mean, part of this agreement was like, good landscaping for the tenants and things like that, which is something that they wanted. I, I understand what you're saying about the restrictive deck.
Yeah, so here's, here's the problem. You want something from us, you need to give us something, right? At the moment, you're describing something where we're not going to have income-restricted unit, restricted units for the life of the no parking, not, parking not being available. So, either provide the required parking by adding more stackers, or wherever it is you do, and then you don't need us, or give us something that commits to providing parking in the future. Otherwise, it's sort of a hollow special permit, it's not getting anything in return.
While you may be earnest, it will soon become a special permit that's abused by others who aren't, who are like, oh, let's just sign this, say we're gonna do affordable parking till 2036, and then we're gonna flip this to market, and ha ha, we don't have to provide any parking.
Right.
But I mean, but, the special permit doesn't require no parking, right? It's just a bit of relief on the parking requirement.
No, it's taking away the parking.
Takes away their parking requirement, period.
100%. All those required parking spaces are gone now, because you're building a building on it, right? And you're only providing the required parking for the-
The new building.
The new building, and only for the market units, because there's no parking requirement for the, for the low-income units, right? So, it's kind of like getting your cake and eating and eating and eating. You need to give this, there's a public policy reason behind this special permit, which is to provide low, affordable housing. So, we need-
Which is being provided, it is, we are facilitating the development of affordable housing here. I think there is no requirement in the special permit, as you all know, about any term of years for the ensuring affordability. Why, why is 30 years the requirement?
I think the, the text may not be specific.
It is not.
But if you go back to the way the text was written, and the hearings, the public testimony and all of that that happened, and what is on record at the council hearing, the intent was to retain and secure existing public housing, and, and, sorry, affordable housing. And that, and, and that's really was the impetus for this text to be, this was the way to generate additional revenue for the affordable housing, and to provide housing opportunity for future additional affordable housing.
Which is the case.
So, right, so while the text may not be there, but that really was the intent.
I think the question is the term of years that's being placed on it by the board, 30 years, where, where, why does it have to be 30 years?
It's not a term of years, it's permanent. You eliminate all the parking from the site.
Previously, we had a discussion that, because we have an existing restrictive deck on the new housing, that's 30 years, and the discussion by the board was they wanted something that matched that, because the HAP contract was only 20 years.
They wanted something that matched it, so they ride in tandem, because it was so disconnected.
Right, you did mention that, so that would be 30 years then.
But at this, but the whole issue is, in a situation where we can see that there's a place to put the parking, there isn't any, any reason why at any time in the future, the parking isn't put there, at the time when the restrictive units are removed.
Especially since we're considering it to be such a minute possibility, with a relatively easy fix.
And I think we're just asking the board to understand here the predicament that we're in, and trying to resolve that.
It's not a predicament, you're not in a predicament. It's a deal. Deals work or get negotiated, so you need to go back and negotiate your deal to provide for assurances to us that the housing will remain income-restricted.
For as long as-
We'll enforce the restrictive declaration.
Or, or the parking is provided. It's easy, and it's just a deal that needs to get worked out again. Negotiations, that's what makes the world go around.
I mean, previously, this would have been a condition.
No, it's never been a condition.
Who is going to be, no, no, I mean, this type of requirement, I would think, would be more appropriate as a condition rather than a restrictive declaration.
No, because we have no way of enforcing a condition against someone who's not a participant in this project. The, the condition is enforced against the current, the, the groundless or, right? And so, how do we enforce against the groundless or when he's not even a party to this application? So, we need the groundless or to be a party to the restrictive deck and a party to this condition, and I don't want to debate this anymore, I think we've been very clear. So, let's move on to the other, next subject, which is the shortfall of the 19 spaces.
Yeah, do you want me to sign it again for the second?
No, no, I'm sorry, that's the next one. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
All right, so what's the date on this?
Do you have any speakers?
Are there any speakers on this?
Yeah.
Sorry, okay. There were minor corrections that were needed on the EAS, I don't know.
Yeah, they were fine.
They were fine, okay.
We're done. Same thing with the other.
All right, so we need to, okay, so let's see, and also, the, I think there was a comment about the drawings, where the, sorry, yeah, the drawings need to be amended to show, because it's a string dimension that's completely inaccurate, that shows 49 foot nine inches between the buildings, it's not allowed.
Yes, I mentioned that, we would correct.
Right, and that the note will be moved to say, DOB to confirm relocation of rear yard equivalent complies with the zoning resolution.
Yes, we're making those changes.
And then we had a problem with the parking count on the seller of the first floor, it wasn't matching.
Also making that.
So, you're going to-
Those changes have actually already been made, we just didn't have a chance to submit before the hearing.
All right, so.
Timing.
Well, if we're gonna, I mean, really, we want a restrictive deck, so we need to allow time to, for you to make your negotiations, and then provide us with a restrictive deck. We have standard one that we could share with you.
Yeah, we can share the template with you for other special cases.
So, I think we should give them like, till the end of April, or something like that, or in order to do that negotiation. And get back and forth with the restrictive deck, right, to the council's office.
Sure, okay, so.
I mean, we can have that all done much sooner, if it's possible to have a sooner hearing. I mean, we'll, we'll know either way about the restrictive deck sooner than April.
Well, okay, the either way, it's not gonna be an either way. It's gonna be a restrictive deck, so you just need to, that's why I want to give you enough time.
Well, I can't, I can't sign it, so.
No, I know you can't, so that's why I want to give you enough time to make it clear to the less or, groundless or, that this is what we need, or we can't move forward with your project, so.
I think we'll have, time will not make a difference, I think, if it's possible to have a March hearing date, that would be great.
Oh, March is-
No, it's not gonna happen at this point.
Can I ask you a question? Are there any, are these projects that are coming online, a couple of affordable units that are coming online from this project, or the Johnson one, are they being counted towards any of the city's housing closing deals or anything like that?
No, they're totally privately funded.
Totally private.
No, I just had to ask. Yeah. No, they're, yeah, they're-
No, no, they told us earlier, it's privately funded.
We can do an April 3 submission for our April 23 hearing.
Okay.
Okay, item number 23, 201855BZ222, Johnson Avenue, Brooklyn, raise your right hand. Are you all consistent? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the board, and respond honestly to board member questions?
Nora Martins from Acroman LLP for the applicant. So, I think on this one, we had a similar comment on the income-restricted housing unit definition, so we will submit the same information as for 159 Borum. And I think the only other item, other than the restrictive deck, that was noted by the board was the parking shortfall. So, we did, I just want to discuss briefly the parking study and additional information that was provided to the board prior to this hearing. So, the parking study that was prepared generated the anticipated parking demand for the zoning lot, which includes the new building, which is 116, 116 units, and the existing buildings, which are 79 units, so a total of 195 units, 92 of which are market-rate units. All the other units are, in some way, income-restricted.
How many are market?
92.
92, thank you.
Those are all in the new building. So, the balance, the 103 units will, are affordable units in the new building, or existing income-restricted housing units. However, the parking study-
Wait, wait.
Sorry.
Say it one more time, there are 92 market rate, and?
92 market rate out of the 116 units in the new building, plus 79 income-restricted existing units, for a total of 195 units on the zoning lot. So, the parking demand study, for very conservative purposes, bases their demand on all of the units on the zoning lot, regardless of income restriction, whether they're new or existing. So, the result is very conservative, generated a demand of 65 parking spaces. 46 are provided on-site, so there is that shortfall of 19 spaces. However, we are, 46 spaces, based on the 195 units, is providing parking for almost 24% of the units. Paul mentioned it briefly, on two other projects they've done very recently, and our part, the parking site that was submitted to the board, part of this hearing, was amended to include this additional information. The actual parking utilization of two new buildings in this, in this neighborhood are 5% at 83 Bushwick, and 8% at 66 Ainsley, far below-
But those are income-restricted units.
No, they're 80/20 buildings.
Those are 80/20.
Mm-hmm, so they actually have more market rate units than the proposal.
So, so can I ask you, I mean, it seems to me that there must be some kind of data sources, that it has to do with the difference between car ownership in lower-income neighborhoods, therefore the income-restricted unit representatives, versus market-rate units that are paying whatever the market rate in this area is, because people who are paying market rate are more likely to have cars. This is a location where it's pretty convenient to drive right to Long Island, so that you might have a car, more likely to, to, I mean, and we've seen that, more likely to have a place to go.
Why would people in Bushwick necessarily be driving to Long Island? That seems, I don't understand that assumption.
It's close to Long Island, and so that's an opportunity to have weekend activities, going on trips, et cetera, et cetera. So, obviously, people with more money tend to have cars, where car use is desirable, right? And people with less money don't have cars, because it's expensive to have a car. It'd be different if this is located in a place where kind of nobody has cars, like if this were in Manhattan, where nobody has cars, or parts of Brooklyn, even though, I wouldn't even say, even in Brooklyn, in sort of the Dumbo areas, a lot of people have cars, right?
We're giving, can we, we have actual information here about buildings in this neighborhood that have been built recently with real parking utilization numbers, can we use that information?
So, yes, so I think, but the point is, it shouldn't just be, I think, I don't know, you don't have your consultant here?
Yes, she is here.
So, let's talk with your consultant, so we can-
You have to be sworn in. You could, come to the podium, you could be sworn in from there.
Do you affirm, I can swear you in if you would like. Do you affirm, raise, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board, and to respond honestly to board member questions? Oh, and you need to sign in, but when you're finished.
Please state your name for the record.
Sure. My name is Aviva Laurenti, I work at Sam Schwartz Engineering, I'm the traffic consultant for this project. You have to be sworn in? I swore her in. I'm sorry, I missed it.
Okay, so, so the question is, if you're just using census tract data, has the census tract data taken to account anything to do with income levels? It doesn't, it just sort of blends it all together.
There is income level information in the census, but when it comes to vehicle ownership, it's included, it's just for household.
Right, so, but, so is there any kind of data source where, I mean, for instance, when we have senior housing, we have data sources that talk about how many people in senior housing actually have cars, right? That, that ends up coming into the studies. If the- If the, if the argument here is that fewer people who are in the income restricted units have cars, if that's the argument, then isn't there some kind of data source that's available that, that looks at that question versus what people in market rate units do in terms of ownership, car ownership?
For all studies that have been for the Department of City Planning and the Department of Transportation, they simply use this source from the census, per household. It's not function of income at all. They can't guarantee who's going to live in these units at any point, so this is the data source that they use for all parking analyses.
But, but, so in this case, you can guarantee who's going to live in the units, right? Because they're income restricted.
Right, but the census data is not defining vehicle ownership, I don't believe, by income level, it's just by household.
No, I understand census data isn't, but are there any other kind of data sources that look at, there must be something in, like that look at...
There's obviously, you can do surveys, and that's sort of what Nora was alluding to, is that we have actual data from this neighborhood of these kinds of units that we could use as a source, but it's showing that it's a much lower vehicle ownership than we're proposing in this study.
Because we're relying on your study, right? Your study's telling us we have a shortfall of 19 cars, and that's what we rely on. So if, if there's a reliable source of information that indicates that there's another way of looking at your study, but we need to see what's the reliable source of information, right? That would be acceptable. Go ahead.
Could, could you possibly expand your survey to more developments instead of just those two, so that we could see there's a pattern?
Actually, we have, sorry. We have Stephanie along here from a broker who has worked on buildings in this, in this neighborhood, and could speak to that. Or she could submit.
Okay, but, but it needs to be something that's based on, for instance, you're, you're just talking about the, the housing that's here, where it's not really clear what the parking utilization would really be, because the parking lot has been closed, right? So it's not really clear how, what utilization would be if the parking lot were open.
Right, but you gave us two other developments.
Right.
So if you could give us a list of developments, which I think we had a case a long time ago that requested a parking waiver in Harlem. And what they did is they showed us that there were, across the street, in a radius, there were several developments that had a requirement of like 25%, but only when they built the parking out, only had utilization of like 18% of the parking lot, to show that a similar type of development is not going to really generate that kind of a parking demand, even though zoning requires that we provide it.
Right. So, but, and to be scientific about this, you need to know the income mix of these apartments, right? So, I mean, I, so that, that's part of it, right? So if you're looking, because I, I don't want the study to be scientific, I don't want it to be just something that it feels like it's not going to be necessary. So when, when you're, you're looking again at what is available in the immediate area of apartment buildings, what the typical apartment mix is, unit mix is, in terms of income, and then the utilization of the existing parking lots, where the parking lots are made available, okay? But I, I really would like it to be coming, it needs to come from our, our consultant, not coming from...
So, actually, I mean, we can work with Sam Schwartz and Nookland, our broker, Stephanie's from Nookland. They, Nookland has digitized leasing records, and so they can make it clear, like, how many, how many new leases have parking spots associated with them. And I think, it sounds like your particular concern is market rate housing, so we will focus on that. But again, I just want to reiterate that our experience, Nookland's experience, is that the demand for parking in these market rate developments that are being built in Williamsburg and Bushwick are much less than, than is required by the zoning code. And I think that's also reflected in the fact that the community board agreed to approve this special permit, and that the council member has submitted a letter of support for this special permit, this parking special permit. There doesn't seem to be any particular concerns about parking in the community. I also, I also just want to clarify that there's a 19-spot parking shortfall in Tutti Du Johnson, but Sam Schwartz pointed out that those spots are easily found on the street during the day.
We don't do shortfalls on the street. So this is, what's the point is?
Right.
All of our parking waivers, when the parking study indicates a shortfall?
Yep.
Shortfall has to be met inside the building. We do not rely on street, that's the whole point.
Got it.
The parking study has to indicate that the number of parking spaces in the demand are met onsite, okay?
Got it.
Alright. So, okay, so I'm counting on Sam, so Sam Schwartz's office is known for putting together really scientific studies, and so it shouldn't be sort of loosey-goosey information. It's information that the, that their office feels is a reliable source, and can then reliably tell us what they think the demand is based on reliable sources, okay?
Yes, we'll do that.
Alright, and same holds for the restrictive declaration issue. Okay. Are there any speakers on this one? So let's, for the same...
Same date, April 23, submission date of April 3.
Thank you.
Item number 24, 2018-95BZ.
Yes, she does, she's assigned.
This is adjourned, and that's why we're doing this. Otherwise, no.
I don't think I have to swear in for an adjournment.
No, you know.
Jay Goldstein on the...
120 Avenue, M. Brooklyn.
Go ahead. Jay Goldstein on behalf of Ridge Shell Mobile PC for the applicant.
They have open hazmat air quality and noise reviews pending, so we should give them also until April 23. Here we go.
They said, I mean, they told me that, that March date would work. I know March is out for you guys, but if you have something earlier in April.
March is out for us.
No, I understand that, but I know you had it April 9.
April 9, they're, it's up to the chair, they're 26.
They...
On April 9.
They kind of indicated to me that it would be, that they'd be good with the March date, so I assume April 9 would be fine.
This is a variance, nonprofit.
We had programmatic needs on the center.
And we had a lot of questions on this one, which is a programmatic need.
Yeah, move it up for one more lady.
Later, okay. So you're April, you're April 23.
Okay.
They are April 23, but it's submission date of April 3.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, we're taking a 30-minute break, back at 3.
Starting with new cases.
No, it's too much, too much sitting and not...
No, no.
Okay, we're back on the record. This is the Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for February 12, 2019. We'll continue with the zoning calendar, new cases, item number 1, 2018-58BZ, 1182 Broadway, Raise your right hand. You affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the board to respond honestly to board member questions?
Yep.
Please sign and proceed. There we go.
Good afternoon, Daniel Braff on behalf of the applicant. I attended yesterday's executive session. I believe the first comment related to the posting of the notices, we did post in the commercial elevator. So the notices were posted in the residential lobby, on the counter, as well as inside the commercial elevator. I think there were also some comments relating to the plans. I wasn't sure if this is for council relating to the soundproofing, maybe, I think there was a comment to key it into the...
That, that's for you, for your architect to do.
Got it.
So by keying in, there's a little designation that gets put on the floor plans...
Yep.
That, that indicates when, where the detail from the other page is located.
No problem. And I believe the last comment related to gross floor area. It was a good, a good pickup. I was looking through the plans, and it was using a net floor area number for the drawings, and actually, the gross is, I just got the email from the architect, 3882.
3882 square feet, right?
Yes.
Okay. Gross, okay. So here is a question for you. I don't know if there's enough time, I don't know how long this is going to go on for this hearing, but since the only thing we need done is the plans keyed, the acoustical details that are on page T105, keyed to the floor plans, if it's possible for you to talk to the architect right now, and have them actually do the work right now, we could do what's called, put this on for second call, and, and you, they send it to you, and then you send it to submit.
Mm-hmm.
And then that's possible for us to be able to close and vote on this application. Otherwise, unfortunately, we'd have to waive the...
Move it up. I will give it a try.
You've got half an hour.
I'd like to second this. So they need to work fast.
I'm going to try.
Because we, I don't know that we have a lot.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Item number 2, 2018-165BZ, 25 Hudson Street, Manhattan. Raise your right hand. Do you, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the board and respond honestly to board member questions?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Jay Goldstein for the applicant. Didn't think there were any questions yesterday.
No, I just, because I might have mixed this up with another application.
So we submitted the notice from the, we submitted the regular notice with the mailings, plus a picture of the notice in the residential lobby.
You did, okay.
January 18th at 12:31 PM.
Okay, sorry, sometimes I cut and paste, and I don't know whether I did that.
No problem, happy I got it right.
Alright. Okay, so...
I have a question, actually. Since, since you, the PC opened since the application was filed.
Yeah.
The hours of operation you had in that statement of facts were proposed, do you know if they're...
Those were the, they were proposed based on what they wanted it to be.
Okay.
Okay.
We generally do it like that, because, you know, when they first open, it's reduced hours till they get very busy. So we give her kind of a increased hours.
So it's shown as 5:30 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday, seven days a week.
Right.
Right, okay. That's an early Monday, Sunday morning class.
The yoga studio.
What?
The yoga studio with a lot of sound attenuation.
Yes, a lot of sound attenuation.
Yeah. Okay, so then, are there any speakers on this? Then I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
And a motion to grab. Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number 3, 4311BZ, 1926 East 21st Street, Brooklyn. Good afternoon, Mayor Altman from the office, Mayor Altman, I assume you do not need me to swear in?
No. We're going to adjourn this, so the architect can come to the next.
Thank you.
And the applicant can respond to the comments that we made yesterday at the review session.
With pleasure.
Okay. So to give time to do that work, not a small amount of work, but...
I spoke with the architect. Would it be possible to have a date of April 23?
It would.
April 23.
I'm so glad to hear somebody so happy.
Spoke to my heart right there. Okay, I'm sorry.
What date did you not want me to ask for, for your...
March, anything in March.
I know you can't do March 26, we've been...
I, I can, and I know your fault, other than that, and I spoke with the architect, I know April 9 is also busy.
Yes, so April 23, with submission date of April 3.
April 23, April 3.
And we had also discussed that the new submission be submitted to the community board and the...
Of course, I will point out for the record that every submission I've made to your board is also sent to the community board, so they are aware of everything, you're aware of. What I'm going to do this time, I think I'm going to try to resubmit everything, just because this is a long history, submitted partially by me, partially by the prior applicant. This way, if I give you one complete package, and I'll speak with community board 15, if they'd like to see me at 14, if they want to see me back out, it'd be my pleasure.
Okay. So can you please give us some kind of letter that shows that you, the cover letter, to show that you submitted what you submitted to the community board, so we have on record that you submitted today?
Right, well, that's why we always put the CC list on the bottom, that's everybody that I've sent it to. So if I've sent it to you with a CC list on the bottom, I've sent CCs to all those individuals.
I thought Henry said you did send to the community board.
What'd you say, said that again?
I thought Henry, it said, she did send to the community board.
Did?
Of course.
Yeah. Alright.
No, we have proof of notice of hearing to officials and neighbors, but we didn't have proof that the, they received the updated application.
Right, but the thing was, we have an approval from 2011, and I think the concern was wanting them to see kind of like a renewed, like...
Yeah, because I made a note that he's...
Eight years later, hi.
Well, when I submit...
I made a note that he said that they did, but, alright.
No, that, his note is that the community board voted on it in 2011.
Oh, okay.
Right, we want them to look at it again.
Okay, fine. When I submit the full revised to you, of course, they will get a copy as well.
Okay.
And I will call them and see if they'd like me to come back out.
Right, that'd be great.
No problem.
Alright, so we pick the dates.
Yep. Thank you very much. Okay, item number 4, 2018-140BZ, 100-03 North Conduit Avenue, Queens. No, sign. Oh, sorry. You need to sign.
Oh, right.
Okay. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond honestly to board member questions? Okay. I know this is a jurisdictional thing, but it doesn't matter, thank you.
Good afternoon, Eugene Pelman for the applicant. We understand that the hearing is going to be postponed. It's being voted on by city council tomorrow, on the 13th, by the full council, so we were a day late.
A day early. I think there's a song about that. Alright, so fortunately now we're...
Fortunately, we're now in April.
Yeah.
We're in April, is anything?
Yeah. Yeah, no good deed, right? So the next hearing will be April 23, and I don't believe there's any submission.
No. Unless, well, actually, we could certainly respond...
We'll submit the updated zoning map, it should be ready by then.
Yeah, right, right, okay.
And, and also if you are meeting the community board's conditions and those kind of things.
Well, we didn't go through our comments.
Right.
So don't assume anybody heard the comments. So this is a postponed hearing where we did... I'm just saying this on the record, where we did not go over our comments in the review session.
So we'll do a new notice on this for the 23rd?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, okay, so we'll have to generate a new notice. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number five, 2018-155BZ, 1123 East 27th Street, Brooklyn. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
Good afternoon, Jay Goldstein for the applicant. I attended yesterday's review session. I think it's best to respond in writing with diagrams and charts and plans that match. With regard to the heights, we did discuss it in the statement of facts that they're all... All the rear yards behind us that are mentioned at 20 feet are two stories plus attics. I'll try and key it to photographs to illustrate the point.
Yes, more than photographs also. So part of the problem with just a description without any kind of visuals is for one, maybe we're visual thinkers, so a description, how do we know? So it should be when you provide the rear yard diagram, it should indicate on that rear yard diagram...
Yeah, we've been...
What the heights are of those buildings in that diagram that we're relying on.
I'm going to try and key it, figure it out, how to make it a visual.
So because a lot of the times, the photographs also aren't very helpful because the photographer isn't necessarily taking the picture with the intention of showing that information.
Right.
And then the photograph isn't labeled to say, "That's the house we're talking about. See, it's a two-story house." So they tend to be so general that I often can't tell what I'm looking at.
Yeah, I think a lot of times it's done to show... Or they're taken from the perspective just to show our backyard, which doesn't help us out. And I understand.
Right.
A lot of times it is hard because there are trees in the very crowded backyard, so it's hard again.[1611.34]